Yeah, all right. Good evening. Let me call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of St. Helena for Tuesday, July 11th. Ms. Koberstein, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White is absent. Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Koberstein.
Here.
All right. The next item on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us with respect to matters of municipal concern that are not on our agenda, and public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Yes.
Louis Batuello, 1634 Main Street. A long-awaited document known as a published document on a topic of interest to us is now available. So I want to make a copy available to each of you and to Cindy. And I want to ask you, take your time reviewing it at home. It's a series of colorful maps, which makes it the homework really easy. And at the end, you'll see reference to Alquist Preolo. And that is a new controlling type of law that will affect us. Maps for our area are being prepared right now by the California Geological Survey and will be made available to all cities here in the county when completed. I don't yet have for you an estimated time for that, but it means we have to start thinking in terms of looking at zoning a different way. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Further public comment?
My name is Louis Hurtado, 1580 Kennedy Court, St. Helena. I am a native of St. Helena, original resident of the Lugo Park subdivision. I'd like to read a petition that we sign and endorse it with you folks.
Sure.
We, the undersigned residents of La Quinta Way and Kennedy Court, also known as Lugo Park subdivision, hereby submit this petition to the City Council of St. Helena as a formal and official request to pave the two streets noted above. They are in deplorable conditions, very similar to those of the Charter Oak Avenue that were recently paved. The pavement of this low-income housing subdivision, built in the late '60s, early '70s, has received one thin coat of asphalt during its 47 years of its existence. I believe that was in '95 was the last time they did something down there. For a point of reference, this Lugo Park subdivision self-help housing project was a first of its kind in St. Helena. This pavement is down to the sharp rocks creating a whirlwind of dust every time someone drives around the court. The wear and tear of the past 47 years has created the diminishing condition of the street. It has become unsafe for children to play in the street for fear of serious injury. It is a La Quinta dead ends on either side, and Kennedy Court is a cul-de-sac, so it's like not the kids are running wild in the streets. Therefore, as property owners, taxpayers, we, the residents of the 18 properties of La Quinta Way and Kennedy Court, request serious consideration to have these two streets paved, similar to the work that has been done recently at Charter Oak Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you could deliver the petition to the city clerk, and our acting city manager's here, and she's the Public Works Director, and I know she took a careful note, and I know many of us are very familiar with the deplorable, completely deplorable condition of those two streets, so thanks very much for speaking.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment? Yes.
Kendall White, 1541 Kennedy Court. So I am going to be speaking as my neighbor did, Louis Hurtado, did on the condition of the roads in that area. I did provide you all with a map, just in case some of you are unfamiliar with the location. It's somewhat of a forgotten neighborhood. A lot of the times in my seven years that I've lived there, I'll tell people where I live, and they won't know. So I provided a map. It's on the southern end of St. Helena, off of Elbonita Avenue. And as Louis mentioned, they do dead end on both La Quinta as well as Kennedy Court. So they're not heavily trafficked areas besides the residents that live there, the 18 homes, or a lost tourist, which happens quite frequently. But even though it's not heavily trafficked, we do see quite a bit of wear and tear after 40 years of, over 40 years of kind of neglect and not being repaved. And as Louis mentioned, the rocks have now become an issue. The asphalt is completely gone. You can see in the photos that it is loose rocks and pretty much dust, so anytime anyone drives by, it creates a dust storm, as well as incredibly unsafe for children. I'm a mother of two children, and I would never let my sons ride bikes on the road just because I don't know what would happen if they fell. So I know that the, I believe Erica came out recently with Paul and saw the conditions, but I invite any of you that have not been there to please come, take a look, and see what we are referring to, because it is quite a bit of an issue, and we hope that you'll take into consideration the repaving of the two streets, and we hope to be on your next agenda for the next city council meeting.
All right. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Having lived on that court all my life, I remember back when people would ask me, "Where do you live?" "Kennedy Court." "Oh, that's such a beautiful neighborhood." We'd be all proud of it, because each house was built by the family that lived there. Fast forward to about 20 years ago, when we got the last layer of asphalt, whatever you want to call it. People ask me, "What happened to your neighborhood? It's ugly." Well, well, primary reason is the street. It's been neglected, and every time a car passes, dust goes everywhere. We have to close our windows when the street sweeper comes, because all the dust goes inside our houses, which lowers, makes our houses look dirty, run down. And just last year, one of the houses was up for sale, and a couple of real estate guys were there looking at the view. They walked down the middle of the street. They didn't know I was watering my plants. And they're all, "Wow, look at that $10 million view." And the other guy's all, "Yeah, too bad this neighborhood's so ugly." And I'm all, "Well," I kind of coughed, and they turned around and I'm all, "It's ugly because it's been neglected by the city. The street's worn down." I remember we used to play with all the neighborhood kids back in my generation. We'd all know each other, go play around, riding our bikes, skateboard, skates. This generation that's currently there, the young kids, they don't know each other because they don't go out and play in the streets. I don't know if they're, you know, on their electronics, but they're not on the streets, when I'm sure their parents would go out there, go out and play. But they don't know each other because it's dangerous for them. Rocks, as cars drive by, it's dusty, you can trip. It's really bad. So I personally invite all of you guys, if you guys could just drive down and take a look at our street. We may not be a touristy area of St. Helena, but we are voters, and, well, let's just say that.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public comment?
Margarita Rodriguez, 208 La Quinta Way. When they were saying that over 20 years ago, because they paved, one of the issues that the paving didn't resist is that two weeks after the paving, Comcast came in and dug their holes up to put their wires underneath. So we really, in a sense, never had new pavings, because it was there for two weeks, and then it was dug up again. So if we could have new paving, but maybe the city and the companies out there can get their agendas together and know what they're doing before they have to go and destroy the work they've done, that would really be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks.
Very good point. Further public comment? Public forum? All right. I'll close the public comment and turn to reports by staff and city council. We'll start with the acting city manager, Ms. Smithies.
Well, I guess I report on both at the same time, correct? I just wanted to give everyone an update that the rate study modeling is underway. We got the utility rate updated, project CIP cost to the consultants before April left last week on vacation. And we got feedback at the end of the week that they should be able to meet the August 8th meeting to report back to the city council. But, you know, it's going to be a hard push, but they're going to try to make it work, so, because they also, too, have vacation scheduled in July. But they're going to try to get the modeling down and report back to council. I received a call yesterday from the Division of Safety of Dams regarding a public notification going out to circ rotations about a round one of self-evaluation requirements of our dams and reservoirs. It's all due to the Oroville Dam. And so don't be surprised, you see the city of St. Helena being listed on the first phase of the self-evaluations. It's nothing bad. It's just that they're requiring every agency to have a consultant come on board, provide a work plan to review our spillway and our dam stability, just to update. That's due September 1st, but I just wanted to give everyone an update right now on that.
Is that both for Bell Canyon and Lower Reservoir?
Just Bell Canyon, I believe. I do have a letter, a copy of a letter was emailed to me yesterday, because I went to Steve. I don't know, Steve Palmer, my predecessor, and I'm not sure where that ended up, but I do have the copy of the letter now and can report back on that the next meeting. I also received unfortunate news yesterday for the city of St. Helena, but some positive news for our acting recreation director and finance grant manager and contract manager extraordinaire, Tracy Prokosky, accepted a promotional offer and will be leaving us at the end of next week. So I know she'll want to give some words before she leaves tonight, and here she comes. And that's all I have for updates at this time, and I have some more later in the meeting tonight.
All right. I have some comments about you when my turn comes, too.
Well, I'll jump in first. Always put job first and say a few words about recreation before I say a few words to the council and the community. Foremost, the fireworks were a great success this year with about 1,500 attendees in Crane Park alone. I want to thank everyone who turned out, and we look forward to seeing you again next year. Also, don't forget, we still have a few spots left in our camp, so you have kids or tweens who are looking for something to do, check out our website. And I also just want to say, as I get emotional, it's been a true pleasure to serve all of you and the community for the past two-plus years. St. Helena feels like home, and this was a tough decision for me. I'm going to miss the vibrant community and my absolutely amazing coworkers. My goal when I join any community is to make sure that I leave it a little better than when I started, and I truly hope that I've done that here in St. Helena. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Black? I don't see any other manager at the moment. All right. Ms. Koberstein? Oh, Mr. House.
I don't have an update for the council or the community tonight, but I do hope to be able to provide an update on the status of the general plan EIR in two weeks from today, or the next council meeting.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Koberstein?
I have just one thing. Attending these meetings of the joint planning agency, you know, related to the disposal company in Upper Valley, and they have an issue that you might have noticed in your most recent bill, but people are disposing of sharps in the blue recycle containers, which find their way to the landfill, and then the employees who are working there, not the landfill, over to the other facility, employees who are working on the line sorting the stuff, get stabbed, then they have to go through some protocol at the hospital. And I noticed on here, it only lists one place in St. Helena where you can dispose of sharps, and I'm not certain if that is correct, but maybe we could ask the staff to see if there are other places. It lists St. Helena Ole Health.
I missed that, St. Helena.
Ole Health on Pine Street.
Ole Health.
But to ask people to please dispose of them in the proper containers. It's a health hazard for the people who are working over at the facility. That's all I have.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I have two things. The first is, two weeks ago, I went down to Monterey for a League of California Cities meeting, and Cindy had really encouraged me to do that, and I was very glad I did. I was there for three days. There were mayors and councilpeople and staff from all over the northern part of the state. So it was a really good introduction to learning what other cities are dealing with. Much of it is similar to what we're dealing with. There are housing issues everywhere, and people are working on strategies to deal with it. So the good part of it is that there's a lot of thinking going around that I think that we can communicate with other cities and work together. So that was excellent. And then on Saturday, July 29th, it's Be Kind Napa Day in Napa County. And that's going to start with a Be Kind Napa Kindness Walk in Yountville. That's on the morning of Saturday, 29th, at 9:30 a.m. in Yountville, starting at Veterans Park, walking up to the Napa Valley Museum at the Veterans Home. So that's the kindness walk in Yountville on July 29th at 9:30 a.m.
Very good. Mr. Doring?
I just wanted to confirm that I did meet with Erica out at the Kennedy Court, La Quinta area. We observed, you know, the conditions of the road. I've talked to several of the neighbors out there. I think the expectation is that they would like to get a better understanding of where their roadway is in the CIP. And obviously, we know that, from my understanding, that the renewal of that or update of that is going to be coming up in the next month or so? Okay. So I think the intention, although it was not direct, is that they'd like to rise up on the food chain, and I think they have been waiting quite a long time. And it did strike me, I think it was a very compelling argument or observation, that, you know, when you have kids who don't even want to ride their bicycles on a roadway or their skateboards or whatever because of falling, and it does sort of undermine the fabric of a community in the neighborhood. We want our children to know each other, to play with each other. That may not be the only reason, but I think it is a partial reason. I can see that, having raised children in St. Helena in a cul-de-sac. That's the place to be. So I, you know, I hope that we can move forward on that, and obviously, that's subject to other priorities and other, you know, costs that we have. But I just wanted to, I thank Erica for going out and taking a look at that. I think at some point, we really, the council needs to get a little bit more of an update on the LAFCO issue and where we are with our municipal services review. I know it's under review. And not, the reason I'm asking is that if there's an opportunity for the council to weigh in, to be an advocate on behalf of the city of St. Helena, the more information we have, the better. I'm no longer serving on that committee, so I don't have sort of the direct access that I did in my short stint that I was on that body. But we're in the middle of a municipal service review that has significant implications for the city of St. Helena. So it would be nice to, I don't know where we are in terms of the draft, administrative draft, or where that's going, and maybe some feedback from our staff as to how we can help the process along. And then the third thing is the parking issue. I think maybe that will come later, with the Los Alcoas parking issue, and I'd be happy to chime in and kind of speak for Peter in terms of what we've done, but I know that Erica's going to give a brief report there also. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's scheduled. Do you have any comment with respect to where LAFCO is with respect to its administrative draft?
Yes, thank you. Actually, staff just received last week the most recent updated draft of their sphere of influence review and report. This will be our third round of comments on that document the city staff has provided. It is a significant undertaking, as you mentioned, and as such, it's taken a significant amount of staff time to review the entire document. Multiple departments have been involved. Planning departments taking the lead on providing comments to that, working with LAFCO, trying to get them to understand the city's position on the extensive amount of services that the city does provide outside the city limits, and trying to get them to formally recognize that as they set the boundary of the sphere of influence. But staff, 100% appreciates the direction from the council, or at least from Councilmember Doring, and I will present a brief update with some formal information to the council the meeting's coming up.
Thank you.
Okay. Good. As for myself, I received a very nice letter from Robbie Meyer, who's the manager of the city Little Leagues, and he complimented city staff, especially Ms. Prokosky, but others in Public Works for their coordination with the Little League and how successful the Little League was this summer, particularly good compliments with respect to the park it uses. And so it's really very wonderful to receive that kind of email, at least occasionally. And then also, I want to compliment the city and Public Works, Ms. Prokosky, again, for what was a fabulous July 4th public fireworks event that seems to have gone off with at least a few hitches. I'm sure there were some, there always are, but certainly most enjoyed by the community. And then just one further comment, which is that Ms. Prokosky, as she spoke, noted that she'd been here two and a half years, and from my perspective, it's just been a great pleasure to have her on the city staff. She's been an exceptionally dedicated city employee. She's dealt with horrendously complex issues, trying to sort them out, done a fabulous job, and I certainly wish her great luck in her promotional position with another city. So thanks for being here for two and a half years. That takes us to 5.1, Tree Committee update by Carlos Rubi. And keep in mind, we do have 9.4 coming up later on, dealing with the Tree Committee itself. So we'll have you back.
That's correct. So this one's, well, first of all, good evening, everyone. And this one's just an update as far as what the Tree Committee's been doing for this fiscal year. Again, I'm Carlos Rubi. I'm a Public Works Meeting Manager, and I also serve as a liaison for the Tree Committee, and I'm also the arborist. And just a quick update as far as what's been going on with the Tree Committee. So we've been working on like the re-oking of St. Helena, which is a grant from Peter Menon, and so one of our staff members serves as with a subcommittee with him, and they're talking about increasing planting of oaks throughout St. Helena. Right now, we've done two, with more to come at the primary. We've done one RLS and one at the primary, and working on increasing that within our parks as well and see right-of-way areas where it's applicable. Recently, and it ties into one of the actions that you guys saw, was the planting of the Juan Diaz tree. That was an oak that was planted in there. So we're continually working on that. We also revised the Main Street's tree plan, so we added six more trees on there to be able to plant along with the other list that we have. We've worked with the PG&E Pipeline Initiative. One example we had was the tree at the corner of Pope and 29. So it was deemed it was too close to their main, runs on the opposite side there with the root. So we work with them, and we, in exchange for that removal, they offered us a four-to-one exchange, so they gave us the funds to plant four trees for the removal of that one. Let's see, processing work, tree permits, whether that be removals or prunings, I believe we didn't have any root prunings on this one. Also, just blanket prunings for utilities like AT&amp;T. We processed eight of those. We are also, let's see, our biggest one that took a toll on us was the Course of Storms. Everyone recalls those. The biggest impact we had on us was the big oak that went down on Spring Mountain. It impacted us for about 10 hours, completely closed the roadway down, but with the help of Britton Tree, it was way too big for us. Britton Tree and three of our guys, we were able to open that up and reestablish traffic. It was a Saturday. I remember it clearly because I was out there and get that roadway back open. Let's see, we, most recently, we're working on getting back on the revised tree ordinance and potentially looking at a citywide tree inventory, particularly with heritage trees, and hopefully encouraging more of more people to apply for them, as it is a benefit for the homeowner and the city. And then working, starting the work with fish and wildlife, like for creek shed protection and any trees that come down along that side for fish habitat. And for future stuff we're looking at, we're still looking at the Dutch, sorry, the Elms at the tunnel and the treatment that are coming up this fall. We're also looking at replanting, I believe we're up to four trees that didn't make it through their replantings. We got four that are replanting there. And another, I forgot to mention, another successful, hopefully another successful Arbor Day. We had a real good one at the library, and we're looking forward to probably a new spot this year, maybe Baldwin Park. There's a nice corner there that needs some new trees. So that's what the Tree Committee's been up to.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And again, like the mayor said, we do have two tree permits pending, but I guess we'll kind of discuss that a little bit more on 9.4.
Yes, that'll be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That would take us to 5.2, and this is, this takes us to 5.2, and this is the report of Parking Ad-Hoc Committee by Councilmember Doring. But, okay, Ms. Smithies is...
He's deferring to me. On May 9th, the city council formed a Parking Ad-Hoc Committee or Subcommittee. Vice Mayor White and Councilmember Doring and myself, the Public Works Director, and discussed the safety concerns, the parking delivery, and the residential neighborhoods affected by the Los Alcoas Hotel. By the locations of concerns were Pratt Avenue, Elmhurst Avenue, Main Street, and Park Street. And they wanted us to report back on our conclusions. We finally met up on June 7th of last month to meet and discuss. At that point in time, Councilmember Doring had done some homework, as well as Peter White, as far as confirming the number of full-time employees, it being approximately 120, with the total demand per shift, about 35 to 40 employees of parking, that required parking. Some, you know, they do take alternate transportation, such as biking and busing, which is fantastic. And of those, by the time that we actually met, Los Alcoas had already taken steps to ensure parking at the church, the Seventh-day Adventist Church on Elmhurst and Main Street, as well as putting out some sandwich boards along Pratt and Park to prevent parking. Of course, it couldn't be enforced by a city because it wasn't mandated by city council, but it looks like staff has been, the employee staff of Los Alcoas has been receptive in not parking in those areas, as well as deliveries. So it seemed like some of the situations, by the time we met, had been resolved. However, we thought that we still needed, there were still concerns about mandating and make it in a permanent effect with the no parking along the first 300 feet of Pratt Avenue on the north side that's facing the vineyard that has the most, biggest impact to agricultural operations along there. And there had been outreach to the public property owners at different times, I guess over the past, probably the past year, about the concerns of the parking. And so our solution is, for at least now, is to put, update the red zone, which is later in tonight's agenda, the consent, to place at least two parking signs along the north street side of Pratt, and then increase at least one parking space of red curb on Main Street north of Elmhurst on the west side. That's been a long-term problem, even before the hotel even was in place, so we're just trying to rectify that and bring it to council. And then have myself come back and reevaluate in six months. The hotel's been operational, and I think things have died down there. Continuing to work, the Los Alcoas is continuing to work with Behringer on additional lease spots over the weekend, and like more permanent solutions. And so far, it seems like it's died down a little bit, but, you know, as things surface, we'll evaluate it further. I don't know if Councilmember Doring has more to add at this time, but...
No, I thank you for that report. I think you've addressed most of what we've talked about and explored. There are other issues that are sort of tangential to the issue. One would be a potential for a lighted path crossing Main Street at the Pratt Avenue area for pedestrians, something to explore. I think it's a relatively inexpensive sort of solution, although it may have unintended consequences. consequences that we have to explore coming right out of that tunnel. So, something that you think is great may not be the best solution there, but we should at least explore that, and Peter and I have talked about that. We've met with the owners of Los Alcobas Hotel, and they've been very gracious in sharing the data that they have, and the number of parking spaces, and sort of their thinking of going forward. You know, one of the other issues, there are other issues, of course, you know, just the permanency of these solutions. I think at some point, the city has to maybe get more information from the hotel about these two alternative parking lot solutions, to see are they long-term or not, are they viable? What happens if one or both of their partners decides to end that relationship? We have to have a Plan B, and I think maybe the ownership of Los Alcobas can speak to some of these sort of issues as they go forward. I'm also concerned about the speed of traffic coming into the tree tunnel. And from my observations, having tried that every single day, it seems prudent to maybe get with Caltrans to come up with a solution where people are alerted earlier on that they're entering St. Helena, and they need to slow down a lot further on closer to CIA and beyond, where there should be a reduction of speed, because I think people are just driving fairly rapidly through the tree tunnel, thinking in their minds, oh, now we've hit the city of St. Helena. And I think their brain has to shift way further back with us, maybe that 45 should go down to 35 further on back, so that people are alerted, okay, you're going into essentially a business and residential area, where people are trying to pull out. The left-hand turns are still difficult for most people. And, you know, most of us kind of wait our time and wait, you know, for that sort of that ideal time where you can turn left. Well, the speeds are reduced, and people know that, then it's going to be easier for people to make the left-hand turns, at least in the short term. And I know that, maybe that's a conversation that should happen with Caltrans. But, in general, I'm pleased with the movement that Los Alcobas has made. In my, from my perspective, they followed the rules that were in place at the time that their permits and plans were approved. Were the rules the best rules? Maybe not. Maybe there was some inadequacy there. So, we're presented with a problem, and we have to address the problem, and I think we're trying to do it together, and I think that's the best-case scenario, to try to get more of the parking off of either Main Street, Elm, Hearst, Pratt, Park. There are, of course, other issues that are lingering in terms of vendors driving through the neighborhoods. It's just an ongoing kind of a situation. I think we have to just keep working at it over the next six months and see how things go. It's a work in progress.
All right, very good. Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
There might be public comment also.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the neighbors, people want to know if they'll have the ability to comment on possible solutions. If possible solutions are arrived at, will neighbors be able to hear them ahead of time and comment on them?
My suggestion would be that folks that feel they have constructive solutions, contact Mr. Doring, or Mr. White, or the Public Works Director, because this is going to be a continuing discussion, even though I think good progress has been made.
Yeah, I apologize if that was not made clear early on. I have been meeting with a lot of different people, a lot of neighbors in those areas, business owners, homeowners, and everybody. Not one person has been fearful about sharing their concerns with me. Some of the concerns are conflicting, where you solve one problem, you create another problem somewhere else, but, oh, I'm very much open to that. Yeah, that's not a problem, and I don't want this to appear that this is Paul Doring's, you know, case, and that I'm going to solve all the problems. I hope that we can all work together, and the more solutions from the community, the better. Yeah, I mean, the folks who live there are the best, you know, indicators of how solutions should occur, because they live it every day. So, I'm open to that.
All right. Well, let me open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment with respect to this issue?
Hi, Lana Ivanoff, Pine Street. I don't live on Main Street, but I've talked to several different people that live there, and this is just thinking outside the box. My daughter used to live over in Santa Rosa, next to Luther Burbank Gardens, and the three streets on either side of Luther Burbank Gardens, because they get so many tourists there, running both ways, require permit parking, and the people that live in those blocks have to get their permit from the city. It doesn't cost them anything, and they usually give them one per car, and then one for a visitor. And when I used to babysit, I was always given the permit, but I always forgot to hang it in the car, and it was an automatic $75 fine. You couldn't ask questions, you couldn't argue it, $75. I'm just thinking about the people that live on Main Street that lost all the parking on the east side of the street, so they can't have their gardeners, they can't have their friends park there, and now they can't even have friends park across the street. This might be just something to consider, that you could have permit parking along there, where the people that live there could still utilize some of those parking places, but outsiders would be discouraged because of the high fines. Might give some money to the city, too, so, just a thought.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Las Alcobas Hotel. First of all, a big thank you to Erica for your leadership, and Councilmember Doring, and Peter White. Yeah, we've been constantly working on this parking. Is it perfect? No, but we are constantly trying, and I think we have made great strides in making it much better. We have a great agreement with the Seventh-day Adventist Church. We value that relationship very much. In fact, Pastor Dan was over at the hotel, and we had a really nice ceremony with our employees, to, you know, really, really be connected with our neighborhood. I share some of Councilmembers Doring's concerns about the speed of traffic coming in from the tree tunnel, and as a business owner on that street, I'm happy, you know, the lighted crosswalk's a great idea, but it, you know, it needs to be studied, and we are happy to finance, you know, the whole aspect of getting it done. On the Behringer side, we're working very closely with Behringer on parking on Saturday. It does, we do have parking 22 spots with Behringer on Saturday, and, but it's, and also additional spots as needed, because it turns out, a lot of our executives obviously don't work on Saturdays and admin, so a lot of our employees can park there. So, at our cost, we have provided signage across on Pratt, and we're continuously working with the Adventist Church on their signage, and we are here, as you said, Councilmember Jeff, that we are happy to have other solutions and work collaboratively with the city and other members. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Susan Kenward, 2835 Santa Elena Highway. I live on the other side of the tree tunnel, past the CIA, and I don't know if I mentioned it to anybody, but twice we've come out at night and come through the tree tunnel, like at twilight, and someone is trying to cross into the crosswalk, like they're parking over on Pratt, and they're crossing over to go to the hotel, there are clear, it seems to me that they're workers that are working there. And we have stopped, because they'll get into the crosswalk, and the car behind us doesn't realize where we're stopping, and they're trying to come around us, and someone's in the crosswalk. So, I don't know if a lighted crosswalk is the answer, but that, to me, since it's happened twice, is actually something that I think if people are parking across the street and walking at night, or whatever, people don't realize why you're stopping, right, when you come through that crosswalk, and you might want to think about lit, or I don't know exactly what it would be, but it's sort of been dangerous for both times, and I thought I would mention it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, I'm Anthony McKelly, live 1125 Cornella. The signs on Pratt are very nice, but all you did is push the parking onto somebody When I was negotiating with Behringer's, they offered to pay for that lighted crosswalk because they were going to provide all the parking for Los Alcobas, but then they changed their mind because they'd made a better deal, the people from Los Alcobas, with the Adventist people. But people within the Adventist community want that contract thrown away, so eventually you're going to have to think about another way to deal with that. And about slowing the traffic down in the Elm, you should do that, because every day there's a van or a delivery truck parked right at the bridge as you come over, delivering to Los Alcobas, and the cops do not ticket them. It's just getting pathetic of what's going on. And even Behringer's offered to put property in the back of the hotel if the city wanted, but that didn't happen. But anyway, work on your problem. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? All right, I'll close public comment. Some more to think about, but certainly, from my perspective, I'm delighted to see Los Alcobas management continue to work the problem with the city and with other stakeholders, and that process will continue, and I just applaud everybody for getting together and trying to work toward a resolution. It's one of these issues that's just going to take time. All right, next item is overview of water agreements and brief discussion, and that's Jennifer Tool.
Today, we're going to have a brief overview of some of the water agreements, and followed by a discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have, and also to provide some additional information. So, this, to my knowledge, about a year ago, was the first time that all the water agreements had been pulled into one place. During the rate study, I had heard about water agreements, but could not find one centralized location to find all these water agreements. So, I undertook the research project, which ended up to be quite large, to find these water agreements. Since all of these agreements have been located, I do believe this is the vast majority of the water agreements, but because there wasn't great record-keeping, there may be something that has been missed. I have researched all resolutions, county records, all paper files, and digital files. So, I think all the bases are covered, but I do want you to know that there may be a possibility that there are other agreements that have not been uncovered yet. And in addition, Cindy has pulled up the website, so there has been a lot of inquiries about water agreements, and over the past couple of weeks, I have been able to put all the agreements online. So, if anyone's interested, I'm going to have direct Cindy real quick to show you where they are located. So, at the top, you see city departments, and you go, click on Public Works, and then from there, on the left side, there's a little plus sign next to water. You click on that to expand that, and then you'll see water agreements. And these are listed in alphabetical order by organization or property owner of who the agreement is with. I have tried to include all resolutions and signed agreements on this list. So, as part of the packet was this table, and there are additional ones at the back table, is the spreadsheet that I have created for the water agreements to try to get a better understanding of what we were looking at. So, I have categorized each type of water agreement. The first on the top is water that we purchase. Then we go into fire agreements, and fire agreements are, we have an agreement with a property owner, and they have a city service, but the only service that we're providing is in case of a fire, so it's for fire sprinklers. Then we have several agreements for irrigation, and then numerous water agreements. I have also gone through and taken the annual limit, which was written in the agreement, and then converted it to 100 cubic feet, gallons, and acre-feet, because there was not consistency within the agreement, so it was essentially impossible to know how much water total was being agreed upon. So, this is a working document, and I've tried to make every effort to present correct information, but there may be an error or two in the document, and if you find any, please bring it to my attention. I do want to make it correct. So, in St. Helena, we do bill in 100 cubic feet, which is HCF, so just to make sure you note that, or it's also called the unit. So, if you're familiar with your water bill, you'll see three units, 10 units, and so you want to pay attention to the HCF category, and that would be what you're billed in. And most of the agreements that are for potable water are required to pay the current water rates that have been adopted by city council. The agreements that are for irrigation, most of them are a different rate than what has been adopted by city council. I've also included the resolution numbers, where I could find them in this spreadsheet, and I want to open it up for questions at this point.
All right, are there any initial questions of Ms. Tool?
I just have one, and I see that Tracy Sweeney is here. There was a mystery about a Behringer water agreement, that nobody seems to have it, but rumor is it's like 19 million gallons or something. Can we work with Behringer to figure that out and add it to the chart?
I actually have an answer for you.
Good.
Oh, good.
So, in some of my research, I had found draft agreements, and Behringer is one of the ones that I had found a draft agreement, and I had put it on my spreadsheet, which is a working document, and it was for 19 million. I was not able to find a resolution or a signed agreement for Behringer, only a draft agreement, and very, very limited information about some of the conversations that were being had at the time between the city. I think there's only two other memos with the documents that I found, but it appears that the city drafted agreement with Behringer, but never executed it.
I think it was Lester Hardy who gave us a little bit of history before, and said one of the reasons we entered into these agreements was essentially to cap consumption at places, and I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be worthwhile for us to memorialize something with Behringer, but it's something to look into, I think. I mean, they also said they use like half the water they used to use, so it's kind of unclear what the situation was.
I do think that what we're looking at here is the capped amount. They can't use more, but that's not to say that most of these customers are using the capped amount, or even close to the capped amount. The problem, though, is that specific customer use, as I understand it, is proprietary to the customer, and not subject to a public records request.
Yeah, well, I'm not trying to find out how much water they use. I just think, if we think it's prudent to cap the use for other large users, I think we should have a discussion, drag out that agreement, and see if it's worth, you know, memorializing an agreement of that type, if they are a large user, which seems to be the impression, but I don't know.
That was one of the discussions I was having last week, was with regard to when we're in a design review, or someone's updating their facility, why aren't we updating the water use agreement? We haven't vetted that one out, but it was a thought that came up very recently, it was last week, why isn't it being done? And I need to talk to city attorney about that in the process.
Well, in the bulk of these, there's also a column that's outside city limits, so it does know whether these agreements are inside or outside the city limits, and the vast majority of these agreements are outside city limits, so...
I have a comment.
Sure.
First of all, I think that the work you did was excellent.
Thank you.
This, putting this together gives us a real reference tool, and before you did this, we, you know, we didn't. So, thank you very much, because this is tremendous.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And then I guess, I guess as we talk more, more will come up. But having this presented and consolidated like this is very important.
So is it fair to state that there are agreements that are out there that maybe not be in writing, that but we don't, do we know, we must know who we provide water to? Are there others besides, I mean, you talked about the unique case of Behringer, that it's an unexecuted document. Do we, we have a list of any other entities that receive water and there's no written contract? Because it seems to me that we need to get a hold of that, that situation.
Well, the bulk of our customers that we provide water to, we don't have any contract with. So if it's a customer inside city limits, there's nothing saying that we would need to do a water agreement because they're within city limits and we provide water to customers within city limits.
Right, I understand that.
And so when we have a customer outside of city limits, to me, it makes a lot of sense to have a water agreement because they're not within our city limits. So therefore, we have a written agreement saying you're allowed to take this much water or this, you know, 60% surcharge and all the stipulations of the agreement. I haven't been able to unearth the history of why some of the customers inside city limits have a water agreement. Mary, it may be what you suggested, but I don't have, I have not found any documentation stating that that is the reason.
I read an old article in The Star around the time that it was happening, you know, when the city was considering water agreements. It didn't give a lot of detail. And I think Guy Kay was quoted at that point, talking about the amount of water. I think it's a policy question of do you want to cap? That seemed to be the reason, and seems to be sort of a good reason to maybe do it for even people who are inside the city limits.
Well, and bearing in mind with the rate study, because we are also working on that at the same point, water is very difficult because we need to conserve, we're potentially moving out of the drought. But capping water use does cap revenue. So it's just something to be mindful about for customers that are within the city limits.
Yeah, I think this is not just a cap. It's also a commitment from us. It's essentially an allocation to these people, I believe, I haven't read all these agreements yet, that they're entitled to this water. And so to my way of thinking, we have a group of people who have sort of a reservation, if you might say, on a fixed amount of our water. And it's an interesting topic to me because I, and I will bring it up again when we get into the rate study, because I believe that the users you have here, who we have committed to provide a certain amount of water to, should be paying proportionate share through the base rates of the capacity that we have and that we have to provide. And that's why I'm continually having a little conversation with our rate consultant about whether there's something we can do at the end of the study to allocate a little more of the fixed demand cost to the industrial side. The people we have here, this is quite a, quite a large amount of our demand that is kind of on reserve for them.
I also found it very fascinating.
Yeah. And my understanding is that if we ever have to impose restrictions pursuant to our water shortage ordinance, that these customers would be subject to those restrictions as well. They would have to cut back in any curtailment situation.
I believe so.
Yeah.
It's been about a year. I have read all these agreements, but it's been about a year since I've read all these agreements. So they're not very fresh in my memory. And I will not lie, I cannot retain this amount of water agreements in my brain.
And the way they're metered, inside the city or outside the city, they're metered the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other initial questions? Is there any public comment? Yes, please. Yeah. Ms. Bell?
Louis, again, it seems everything I'm interested in is on the same agenda tonight. I just wanted to comment again. St. Helena is a small city, and under the state's exceptions, we are exempt from water restrictions during any drought. They base that, and it's clearly established in the regulatory framework, on the number of residential water hookups, okay? We do not have 3,000 residential water hookups. So that whole thing doesn't even consider your industrial base of water use. So there should never be a time when we have to face water restrictions under the law. And I just wanted to correct that one point. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bell?
Tom Bell, Hillview, please. I spent about an hour looking at a couple of the water contracts. Couple of questions come to mind. Once a water contract is issued, is it never, does it never end? I guess I would want to ask that question. And I assume these are all approved by the city council over time, every resolution. These are just a couple of questions I have. And then the third is just a comment. It just so happened that one of the contracts I read was for a Dr. Lewis Carpenter. And I noticed here that it did extend in 2013. And I read, I just happened to pick up that contract. I had no idea of knowing what I was going to be reading. But that particular person is allotted up to 74 million gallons of water. And I don't think they pay anything for it because of the appropriative rights that they had years ago from Bell Creek. And I'm going by my recollection on trying to understand this particular contract. But 74 million gallons is a lot of water. And then it did end in 2013 because Mr. Carpenter unfortunately died. And the contract specifically said that unless the city council approved it to be extended, that it would no longer be in effect. So I have nothing against the Carpenter family, but I do want to just state that we're not getting paid for 74 million gallons of water that we are providing to this particular family. And upon their death, it was supposed to be terminated unless extended. So just a comment.
All right. Very good. Any further public comment?
I just had a, Lana Ivanoff, I just had a question looking at this the other day. Like Whiting Nursery is listed on here. Well, Whiting Nursery is no more. So my question is, when they have these contracts, not knowing the end dates and what have you or how that works, does Farmstead then take over the agreement because they're on the Whiting property, because this is an address here? And the same way with the CIA and the new hotel. Grandview is listed after the Los Alabas. And then on the CIA Marlinda, I'm just wondering, when Marlinda closed down and had an agreement, does that agreement transfer over to the CIA housing for their students? I'm just curious to know how that works.
Okay.
I'm Anthony McKelly. Live 1125 Cornella. I'm also curious, because Jennifer said in the city, you don't generally give water agreements, but 11 on this list are in the city. But Behringer, the number two user of your water, isn't even listed in any of this stuff that they even use 19 million gallons of water. And I don't understand why they're not in here. And if you add BV, which they also own, they use most of our water, but they're not even listed as a person. And I'm curious, on these meters that you say, everybody has a meter on this list? And the city reads that meter? Okay. Just curious. But that is not, but I'm assuming that's all public record, correct? Mr. Brown?
Addressing.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, is that public record?
What is what?
These water agreements and the amount of water they use.
Not the amount of water they actually use. The agreements themselves are public records. They're attached to city council resolutions.
Except for the Behringer agreement, which nobody has, correct?
That's correct. At the moment, we say, or the city says, there is no agreement because it hasn't been able to find anything other than a draft agreement that's unsigned in its files.
Okay. Because when I made a public request for documents, I was told there was no such agreement.
Well, there is no signed agreement.
Okay. But I wasn't even given an amount of water that Behringer's used in my appeal process. So, you know, it's kind of bad when you ask for a record and you're told by city staff nothing exists, but then all of a sudden, you find out after they're using 19 million gallons of water. And but anyway, that's not.
Again, the fact that a draft agreement fixes a cap at 19 million gallons of water does not mean that the customer is using 19 million gallons of water. That's a proprietary record. Okay. Any further public comment? Any further response from Ms. Tool? Some interesting legal questions were certainly raised, and I don't expect you to respond to those off the cuff at all.
I'd be happy to have Mr. Brown respond to any legal questions. So the first question was a question about being exempt from restrictions and that, oh, okay. So we do, in the last couple of years with the drought, we did have to do reporting. We had a whole series of mandates that we had to meet and state reporting. It is true that we were under a different set of regulations under the drought than larger cities because we have less than 3,000 people. But we were still required to enact a whole set of rules, and they were implemented and have since been lifted because our water supply is stable. To my knowledge, the bulk of the water agreements, when I read them, do not have end dates. But I would like to defer to our city attorney and his team for that level of expertise and legal opinion. I have tried to find all the resolutions associated with the water agreements. On the list, there is a column that says resolution number. And I have noted unknown when I could not find a resolution. And there's, there's four of them. And that's not to say it didn't go to city council. It just means at this time, in the amount of research that I've done, I have not been able to locate a resolution. Dr. Carpenter, I have also read that agreement, and I agree that it does state in there that it, something about when he is deceased. But I would also like to defer on that to our legal team. I can try, but I really didn't go to law school. And I, art major. And I know his is unique, or was since he's passed, because he does, or at the time the agreement was written, had water rights. And that agreement was written in, I believe, 1960s, '62. So quite some time ago. And so I would seek attorney opinion on that. And with the Whiting Nursery and that there's no end dates, and does the new property owner take over the water agreement? I would also like to defer to the city attorney on that question. And then with Behringer, like the mayor just stated, it, because it said 18 million gallons, that does not have any correlation with what Behringer's actually using. That was just a number in a draft agreement that I've not been able to locate a signed copy. And I've looked and looked and looked. So I do not believe a signed copy exists at this time. So, because I don't know where else I could possibly look to locate that. And I think that was all the questions.
Do they have, was there an expiration on it?
The bulk of them, I did not see that in the agreement, but I would seek attorney opinion on that because some of the nuances in these agreements, and you can see the number of them. And when you're going through and reading this many agreements and you're not an attorney, my eyes kind of start rolling back in my head. And I don't think that the bulk of them expire, but I don't know if they transfer with the landowner. We would need to get a team of attorneys probably involved to answer that level of questions. And I know right now, our attorney budget is limited.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Carr?
I can give you, Mr. Mayor, if you're interested, I can give you a very quick summary that is not based on a review of these contracts. But I can tell you that generally, when contracts don't provide for a specific term by which they end, then the courts will imply a reasonable ending to the agreement. Now, there's a substantial body of case law that modifies that depending on the language of each contract. And although I haven't read all the contracts, I know that they are not consistent, they're not based on one template. So before anybody can weigh in on whether these contracts end or have an implied ending, someone needs to look at those and do that analysis.
Right.
That's not, that's an attorney.
But you did, you did do an excellent job compiling and unwinding the first part of the problem.
Yeah.
So it is excellent.
I look at it as a first step. If I can understand what we have and identify the documents, then that's a good foundation for an expert team of attorneys to really dive into it and look at it at a different level.
All right. Ms. Carr, did you have one more question?
Yes, just one quick question. And this, whoops. Susan Kenward. So it says, I just want to get this straight for the budget and how they determine our rates. Because if, in doing this whole water study, the rates were determined by the fact that we had to supply or have on hand 169, 853 million gallons of water, whether they used 5,000 gallons or 169 million, the city has to contract to buy this amount because of the contracts that we have. Is that true? So is that what you're determining our rates on? The fact that we have to supply this amount of money? Well, no, then what are you determining it on?
Well, there is, in the context of determining water rates, somewhere there in there, there's an assumption as to what the overall usage in the city will be. I remember in the 2011 period, the assumption was 2,000 acre feet per year. Part of our problem today, as I understand, and certainly stand to be corrected on this, is that usage is far below what we assumed back in 2011, 2,000 acre feet per year. And that's.
So the budget wasn't based on this?
This is not unique to us. Many cities are experiencing the same thing. But that's what's impacted the revenue, is that we've been good conservationists and been impacted by rising rates, which cuts back usage. But that also has the adverse consequence of causing us to need to raise more revenue to cover our costs.
So we didn't use that number, the 169, in any of this?
No.
We used actual usage?
Exactly right.
That was just my question. Thank you.
Okay, good.
But I guess one of the concerns I would have is what if somebody says, we want this amount? What if all of them at once say, we want this amount of water that we're allotted?
Well, again, if that were to happen and we couldn't supply the water, we'd have to put everybody into curtailment under our water emergency ordinance. That's the way that would work. And I think that's unlikely, but.
I still think there's a good basis to look at this information, though, when we do get our initial rates back. I mean, the whole theory of setting rates based on demand is that the water has to be there if you want it. And under the current rate structure, which we're hopefully going to change, we have our residents paying for 65% of the demand cost, based on the theory that they might want that water, and we have to make it available. And we have our industrial users, who use 20%, 21% of our water, they're paying about eight or nine percent of the total fixed cost. And I think there's a good basis here with the actual data to show that we have had to, we have to set this aside, even if they don't use it. And I think we should look at it and talk with Catherine about it when we're going through the final cost allocations in the rate study.
Be the subject, I think, of our August meeting. Good one. All right. I think I've taken public, you previously commented, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, something you said, though. I'm just puzzled. Have we not used any, excuse me?
I'm Anthony McKelley. I'm just trying to understand what you tried to explain, Mr. Mayor. Are you saying in our water amount that we, I guess, figure out the rate for, but we don't figure in any of the water contracts because we don't know how much water they're going to use, even though they have a ceiling cap? I mean, we must have used half of that rate, or like Mr. Ellsworth said, what do we do if they all want water and we don't have it? Do you blame the citizens now we got to cut back? I'm just trying to understand what you were trying to explain.
What I was saying was that there, when you set water rates, you, among other things, assume the amount on average that you're going to supply per year, because that is the volume you're going to sell, and that has the effect of telling you what the revenue that is coming into your system that's related to your volume. And in the 2011 study, I know it was 2,000 acre feet across our entire system, talking just about the potable water system. It doesn't matter in terms of the volume, what the specific customers are. We know that at that point in time, or we assumed at that point in time, that's what would be used across our system. Today, it's obviously much less. That's what I was saying.
So, you do use the amount that the water contract people do use, because you use that as a basis for next year, then?
We, I mean, they're customers.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing.
Their actual usage gets totaled into the total usage.
Well, when Mr. Ellsworth said, you know, he was concerned that if they all demanded water, we'd be in a big hurt, but it seems like they all probably use close to their quota anyway, so we're covered then, I'm assuming.
All I can tell you is that, is that the assumption that we made back in 2011, about 2,000 acre feet.
Okay, I understand that, but we're in 217.
Is way out of date in terms of current consumption.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That raises an interesting question. Even though we can't know individual consumption, can we know collectively?
We do.
I thought we had, was it 550,000 or?
We do. That's the industrial customers.
No, 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 but overall. Are you talking about actual data for just these customers or actual data for citywide customers?
Citywide, wasn't it like 550?
It's 550 acre feet, give or take.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's what I'm coming from memory.
All right. Okay, very good. Well, this is, certainly represents a lot of work, very nicely summarized and
Thank you.
Gives us more food for thought as we move down the road here. So, thanks very much.
Absolutely. And again, they are all, all the agreements are online that have been executed, if you would like to read them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That takes us on to our next item. Oh, update and brief city council on wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Ms. Nivell.
Yes.
This is this nasty gram that we got?
Well, it's sort of. So, the last couple of meetings, as you know, we've had some public comment with regards to our cease and desist order on our wastewater treatment plant, and council asked me to start coming with an update monthly or every council meeting on the status of our wastewater treatment plant and our cease and desist order. We submitted our feasibility study on the May 1 deadline, and we finally got feedback on June 28th, if I'm recalling correctly. And this, the, no, we did not, on June 28th. We got a follow-up response to our follow-up schedule and came to council on June 13th with a large contract for Larry Walker and Associates to do the groundwater monitoring of the spray fields, because we have neighbors that are concerned about groundwater surges or recharge with reclaimed water. So, we sent our schedule to the state, and they followed up on June 28th with a letter saying they weren't happy with our schedule, that we'd already made assumptions on a direction with our feasibility study, and they talked about groundwater plumes and nutrient reduction, which I immediately called the state and got a representative saying I was questioning that because groundwater plumes, that's the first time I'd ever heard of that. And the nutrient reduction was also not in our cease and desist order. We have, you know, our total spend in solids, our TSS, and our BODs to reduce as part of our CEO, which will be part of our nutrient reduction, but they specified certain words. So, some public emails went out. I believe even the Star editorial board was copied on them. And I had to fire off some emails in the last couple of days just to correct some misleading information that has gone through, because the state is copying multiple people other than the city on their responses to the city. And I just wanted the public to know, and the council, if you have any questions or concerns about the moving forward, the city-state of the wastewater treatment plant, please contact me directly. I can give you the latest information, and that way everyone has the latest facts. And if there is any, you know, we've already fired off a letter. I have a response letter written, had our consultants do a lot of heavy work on that, because that is their field of expertise, and we will be sending that out tomorrow. I was hoping to have it done tonight and have a copy for the council and the public for further information, but it will be going out tomorrow to the state as their request. And I'm hoping that we get an open dialogue with them, because it's so easy to fire off an email or a letter saying what we aren't doing when the city is doing so much to get ahead and be progressive at our treatment plant. We're hoping to have this on the ground. Our schedules moved a lot. It was going to be, hopefully, going up to construction in March of next year, advertise for construction for the Phase 1 upgrades. But with the additional groundwater monitoring, no one could foresee the heavy amounts of rain we got this year. So, the groundwater monitoring is going to take at least three months to get the additional information the state's requesting, and come back and have a final, preliminary final plan, design, and hopefully response by the state in November, so we can finalize design, implement the recommended changes from the study, get the state approval on it, and then implement probably in late May and advertise a construction and start construction in middle of summer of next year, which is okay, because it's going to be a three-year process, probably multiple-year construction contract. So, I hope to get a conference call with the state after I send them their letter, maybe us another site visit, see what we're doing. We have some great things coming ahead with these studies and hoping with our new utility operations manager, who we're in the final stretches of hiring someone, and hope that we can get a partnership with the state and the public that's concerned about our process and the Living Rivers Council, and move forward.
Okay, terrific. All right, any council questions at this point?
I have one question. We had a great presentation a couple of months ago about the three alternatives, you know. So, is the final decision on those sort of on hold until this groundwater, the well thing happens, or are they proceeding at the same time?
As our consultants say, it's a fluid process. It's kind of like the permit process when you're going for a flood reduction project in a creek, and you have one agency over here requesting additional information. You still move forward, but you're moving forward fluidly with, maybe fluid's not the right answer, but that's the perfect answer. But you're moving together. So, the groundwater monitoring will be happening while they're trying to finalize as they get results in. And so, they're trying to do a side-by-side, you know, so we don't get behind our cease and desist order plan. And our requirement of the state is to be, have our city functioning facility in 2020, '21, so.
And as I, because as I recall, there was quite a cost differential among those three options. And so, at some point, we'll know, you know, the three alternatives you presented, which one we're going with, because that was, I believe, wasn't that going to be a loan-funded project?
Correct. And I have reached out to the USDA, at least. I don't want to get too far ahead without our finance director here. And I've reached out to the USDA on their loan process. I got to get on the board, on the phone with the SRF loan folks, the state, and look at our alternatives. And we're going to hire, I think, believe Decker to help us with the bond and look at the best alternatives for getting this. But we have to move fast, since this project needs to get started next year. So, a lot of moving pieces.
All right. Is there any public comment with respect to this issue? Okay, closed public comment. Any further council discussion? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, that takes us to consent items. So, let me read off the consent items, and once again, if any member of the council or public wishes an item removed from consent, please let me know, and we will do it. 7.1, consideration and approved resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an MOU with the St. Helena Unified School District for the repair of the Carpe Field lights. 7.2, red zone update. 7.3, notice of completion for the Pope Street Bike Lanes Project. 7.4, notice of completion for the 2016 Overlay, Charter Oak and Allison pavement overlay capital improvement project R-78. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Ms. Black?
Councilor Cobberstein. I'm sorry, Councilor Doring.
That's right.
Cobberstein.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councilor, Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. Okay. I trust there's no public safety issue?
Yeah, I hope there's not a fire anywhere.
Welcome, everybody. All right. New business. All right. Discussion and possible action on the proposed St. Helena Fire Department Station Number 2 at 1025 Dowdell Lane, and authorization for the city manager to enter a lease agreement for the proposed site. And I assume that's our fire chief. And there he is, Chief Sorensen.
We got the work on the overhead there. Well, we're here to talk about proposed Station 2 at 1025 Dowdell Lane, and it's a two-bedroom house with a garage that we propose to have a engine in the garage, and two firefighters live in the house. The rent for the structure is 3,000 a month for both. There's the garage, there's the house. It's a two-bedroom. And we plan to have two separate leases. The city to have the lease of the garage in the back for the engine, and the firefighter association would be in charge of the lease for the firefighters, choosing the firefighters that need to meet a certain amount of calls to live in the housing. So, it's 1,500 a month each, and the term would be proposed by the landlord, as he's looking for a five-year with a five option, with a three-to-six-month termination if this does not work out. So, we're not locked in if this does not work out. We don't know if it's going to work. We really hope that it does. So, the association is paying for all of the upgrades to get them both up to responding use. Nine firefighters will be assigned to the, to this station. Either they work or live south of Grayson. Many of the city employees, of the Sutter Home employees, would be using this station during the day. Can we have the next slide, Cindy? Okay, this is another angle of it. This was just purchased by the Wilson Felion family, and they're going to put OK Tire in the back, so it'd be down this driveway all the way to the back. And right now, they're down the street on Dowdell, renting from the Comas family at the, well, where OK Tire is. All right, next slide. This is the garage for the engine. Need some upgrades to get an engine to fit. Next slide, Cindy. This is the back of it. It has an attached pole barn that we've rented. What we're looking for is to the first, the building, the garage plus the first pole. And next slide, Cindy. And this is the apparatus. This is a one-ton Chevy Type 6 engine that we propose to station down there at the beginning. Most of the members of the department, the majority, can drive this vehicle, other than engines that have different licensing to drive it. So, this would be, at the moment, the best use up there. Next slide. Okay, this is why we are asking for a second station. The star, that purple star there, that's where the station is, at Dowdell Lane. The little 1480 Main Street, that's the main station. This is who is available during the day, okay? That line, that belt of five dots, that's the Sutter Home employees. That other dot below that near Visatui, that's me. And then there's another firefighter that's airline pilot. So, when he's at home, he's on Zinfandel there. Those are the ones that would use that station during the day, plus another employee near the, near Dowdell. This is on a good day, and now let's go to a bad day, Cindy, next day. We have, this was yesterday when it was press time. We have just a handful during the day, but yesterday, we just were down to three that was within five minutes of the station. It takes 11 minutes for the South End folks, now that there's the Grayson light, to get up to the station. They, there's very, there's no parallel streets on the east side of the town, so they have to wait all the way to Charter Oak and then get all the way around Allison to the firehouse. So, next slide, Cindy. And that's where we're going with calls. We are going to catch, maybe we won't catch, but we're getting close to Calistoga. We've been kind of flat over the years. There's 2010 all the way to the left, and we've been kind of flat. And in the last two years, we've, have not taken on any more area. We've actually been cut out of the Meadowwood area and calls north of town. No medical aids. We don't go north of Deer Park Road, and we are going to be somewhere in the 927 range. We were 763 and 15, 852 and 16, and right now, we are at 452, and Calistoga's at 515. That I would never think that we would even be close to Calistoga. So, anyway, that's where we're headed. So.
Okay, any initial questions of the fire chief?
What's, what's increasing those, what's bringing it up by 200 calls a year? Is there, is there a certain kind of incident that's increasing? What do you guys think? Everywhere? Medicals?
Medicals.
Medicals?
Medicals are more than 60%. There's just more of them. More people in town, more accidents. Few, there's certain parts that have many medicals, you know. I don't want to say which ones are which, but that different areas, older folks have more medical.
Right.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
All right. Let me, let me open it up for...
Just that one question. Just a logistical question, because I don't understand your business as well as you do. But, so, you get alarm, you get, you know, somebody needs help, and how is it, how is that coverage allocated? So, if you had a second station and you get a call, does it depend on where that call is in the city as to who's going to respond to it? In other words, I don't, I don't understand, I want to be sure that it's an efficient use, you know, that if there's a call on the, you know, south of Grayson, then you would think that that coverage would, would be there. But if there's something fairly north, you wouldn't want those same responders to go north, right? You would want somebody on that side. Or would it still be a problem, those people would still have to come from like Sutter Home, for example, and go all the way from that second station, all the way north? Is that what would happen?
Yes. If that's all that's showing up.
If that's all that's showing up, right?
We have an app on our phone, Active 911, that all the firefighters sign into. We know what's, where they are, if they're in town, they're going to respond, they're going to be delayed 15 minutes. And it can get a little scary watching it move, you know, just, you know, everybody says that, well, they want to go to the dump today. And at the same time, then what if? Well, that's what, what would happen. It takes, so sometimes, right now, the Sutter Home guys, I'll just say the South End guys
Yeah, that's fine.
Are going all the way up to get an engine to turn around and go all the way back to Satui. That's not uncommon at all.
All right. It seems like there's going to be a fair amount of work to work out all those little details about who's going to respond where, because you can see, I can see someone coming from the south, and maybe it's actually better and more efficient for them to go all the way to our existing station, under certain circumstances. I mean, I don't know that, but
Yes.
As opposed to going to the second station, getting into the vehicle, then going, right?
Sure. Now that you can go to that.
Is there an app for that?
Now you can go to this station, let's say you get a rear ender at Grayson, which is, those calls are way up, because there's a light. You're going to get those with lights. And now that they're, they're right there, they're right, right in front of it.
All right. I just want to let the council know, I had, I put in like eight questions, like a typical lawyer that would do it, you know, and I, Chief was very responsive and very timely in responding to a number of questions that I had. So, I'm feeling more comfortable now that he's sort of laid out the case. So, thank you.
Very good. All right, let me, you can take a seat or stand. Is there any public comment? No public comment. Oh, yes, Ms. Navarro. Always wonderful to have our former mayor here.
And Navarro, and these guys. Impressive. I just was wondering, John, you mentioned something about going to... I just was wondering, John, you mentioned something about going to Satui and then back again, and I know Satui's in the county, and I know the county had years ago polled quite a bit of funding for our guys, reporting, you know, first to call on places that were outside the city limits, but much closer for our, our guys to respond to, and I'm wondering if the county has polled that, or if they're doing their fair share, or making sure that I, our guys are getting paid and, and we're getting compensated properly for the work that these fine folks do. I don't know what the story is at this stage of the game, but that was not a, a good thing, I thought, that happened, and I hope that that's rectified, given the fact that these guys are volunteers and put so much of their own blood, sweat, and tears into the efforts to save our community, and they don't draw lines in the sand.
Okay, good, thank you. Chief, can you respond to that at all?
The county has a two-year contract with us, and it's gonna be up, so we can review it in the next three months. It'll be up in December, the end of December.
Okay, good.
And one more thing I wanted to add, when you were talking about doubles. This station, our station, is, in the whole county, nobody can figure it out, we have more back-to-back calls than anybody else. Simultaneous calls. No, no reason why, but we have more, we almost need two units more often than, than, than not. I have no idea why. We had two doubles just last week in, in one day. So a double, a back-to-back call, then a little bit of time, and then another double.
What do you mean? You mean the same location? Or you mean just two calls coming in same time?
Two calls simultaneously, or within three, five minutes, and then you get another one. And we had a triple the other day, which is really rare, unless it's a flood type of thing, but we did have a triple.
Okay.
Kind of like baseball.
Thanks very much. Let me open it up to council discussion, and maybe I'll lead off and simply say that I'm completely supportive of this proposal, and I think the chief has done a fabulous job in presenting, as you put it, Mr. Doring, the case for it. Any further discussion?
I'm happy to see that we would have a lease that would have a 90-day cancellation. You know, like you said, this is sort of a trial thing, see how it works. My initial concern about it was getting into some kind of long-term agreement that might be difficult to get out of. And I also think it kind of will, maybe later on, we're gonna talk about facilities, study, whatever information you're getting, once you get up and start working, I think would be helpful for us to assess long-term, you know, what, what the needs are of the fire department.
Any further discussion here?
What are you looking for today? It seems unclear about what the recommendation is, because we don't have a lease in front of us. Is this a discussion, for discussion purposes, and then a lease will come later? Or do you need direction now to enter into a lease? It's not clear to me.
Tom?
All right. The staff recommendation is to, is for the city council to consider giving direction to proceed with the lease negotiations and drafting. So, that's what, what I believe, and the chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the recommendation before the council.
All right, understood.
Along the parameters that were outlined, is that, the five-year with a one-five-year option and a 90-day termination, right?
You could certainly give whatever parameters you, you felt were appropriate. Ms. Black just reminded me as well that there is a resolution in your packet as well this evening.
Yeah, it's kind of bare bones.
It is not authorizing, it, it is simply authorizing the department to proceed with the negotiation and drafting of a lease, which then would be brought back to you.
Okay. All right.
I would, I would make that motion, then.
Is there a second?
To accept staff recommendation.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Ms. Black?
Councilor Doring?
Yes.
Elsworth?
Yes.
Cobberstein?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Emphatically, yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you, thank you all for...
You're free to stay, but don't feel you have to. Next item up is Hunter Subdivision and Environmental Impact Report Update.
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, members of the council and the community. Staff would like to give the council and the community an update on the Hunter subdivision EIR process. Many of you probably read the staff report. I do not have good news to share, but I do feel it's important to bring everyone up to speed on where things are. I'll start with some background. In September of 2010, the Hunter subdivision application was filed with the city. They proposed to subdivide an existing 16.2, 92-acre site into 53 residential lots for approximately, the construction of approximately 80 units. In March of 2011, that's, that application was deemed to be complete by the city. In August of the same year, the city issued a RFP requesting responses from consultants to conduct the EIR for that subdivision, and Urban Planning Partners was granted that contract. In September of 2013, the draft EIR document was presented before the St. Helena Planning Commission. However, the item was continued to a future date, and after this continuance, the applicant provided additional information, which resulted in the need for significant additional SEQA analysis in order to come, to finalize the EIR, the draft EIR. And in mid-2016, Urban Planning Partners completed that updated draft document. Upon review by, the planning department has found that additional information was needed, and some further revisions were needed to bring it up to the requirements of SEQA. These revisions resulted in the need for an approximately $25,000 in additional funding from the applicant to complete that additional work. Staff provided, or communicated that need, both for some additional information and the additional funding to the applicant in October of that year, and subsequently met with them in December to further explain it. In April of this year, the applicant provided some of that requested information, but did not authorize moving forward with the work. Then in May of this year, the applicant finally did say, yes, we were willing to fund that cost to finalize that EIR. When that was communicated in the same month to Urban Planning Partners, they indicated that they did not have the staff or capability in order to finalize the document. That was confirmed in an email, which was, which is attached to the report and provided to the council, and that brings us to where we are today. It's a very unfortunate situation, it essentially puts staff in the position of having to seek a new consultant to either conduct a new EIR, or build on the previous work completed, previous work completed by Urban Planning Partners in order to finalize the SEQA analysis for that subdivision. Staff has reached out to, in an effort to try to speed up that process as much as possible and avoid another RFP, staff looked to an approved master services agreement we have, which essentially was done, I think, in 2016, and the intent of that is to get essentially pre-qualified SEQA consultants, or other types of consultants, who can be utilized to do this type of work on an as-needed basis. I've reached out to three of the folks who are on that firm, GHD, LSA, and M Group, all of which have good reputations, and were vetted through that master services agreement process and approved by the city council for inclusion on that list. And I've asked for a response by July 21st to indicate whether they are interested in essentially providing a proposal to complete that work, and that's where we are today. So we're waiting for those responses. There are no direct fiscal impacts associated from this process, because the applicant is required to pay for the cost of completing that document, whatever the result that they determine is necessary in order to finalize it, the SEQA consultants. However, there will be significant soft costs associated with the additional staff time to address the situation, this report and this presentation being a perfect example of that. So with that, this is just an update for the council and community, there's no recommended action currently. Obviously, I'm assuming there's some folks who are here who want to provide some comment on that, and staff is definitely interested in hearing from them and the, and the council. If there are any questions, if there are any.
Yeah, just one question for me, and that is, my assumption is that, assuming one of these firms agrees to do the work, that that firm assumes the full legal liability for the full report.
So, when you enter into an agreement to have a consultant complete a document, it's a contract, just as we were discussing earlier with some other contract information, and those contracts identify that as long as the firm completes the entire document, then they're responsible for it legally. We're in an awkward situation with this, given that Urban Planning Partners' contract says that they do not complete the document, and other folks work on it, then they're not legally liable for it. So if someone were to make a proposal to not write a new EIR, but to modify the existing document, Urban Planning Partners' contract says that they're not legally liable for that, and I imagine that whoever, consultant, should they agree to do that work, would ask for the same clause in their contract, that they would not be legally liable.
Okay, but that, it seems to me would not be acceptable to the city.
Likely the case, and so that's why you'll see in the staff report, it does say that a new EIR is likely the most appropriate path.
Right, that's what strikes me as the appropriate path. But in any event, any further questions from, initial questions from council members? Then let me open it up to the public hearing, yes.
Thank you. Hi, Lois Batuello again. Gives me an opportunity now with the Hunter project to give you my second set of glorious color maps to paper your walls. I'm giving you information that comes from the safety element of Napa County's general plan. Our safety element is silent with maps as far as identifying hazard zones. The counties provides an excellent liquefaction map, where we're susceptible, and shows that St. Helena, and especially in the Hunter Air Project area, is high at risk for liquefaction. That being the case, California law bars the development of multiple-family homes, multi-family homes, in any liquefaction zone, so you can find that in your Title 24 and your, also your hazards areas that deal with seismic risks of liquefaction and landslide. So, with that in mind, if anybody's doing reviewing of the Hunter project, there were two parcels out of the total involved that were listed as for future multi-family homes. I think that has to be amended. Otherwise, the project conforms with what can be done in liquefaction zones, and you can have low-density housing, okay? So you can have like four homes per acre, and the project seems to meet that parameter. It's just, those two parcels listed for multi-family have to be removed. There is no ability to approve or give out a building permit for any kind of multi-family development in any liquefaction zone in California. So here are your maps, okay? And you're welcome, of course, to take some time and re-review that, but the things will get a lot more difficult for everyone, because I gave you the first set of maps that are USGS, I want you to be sure to look at the Alquis Priolo information at the backside, but also look at your third color map down. You have a probabilities chart there. We are 98% certainty now that there will be a major earthquake within 30 years, at least one, if not more, of a magnitude of 6.7 or greater. We have to pay attention to what the, the laws are that are here in California to protect all of us from seismic events, and multi-family is always excluded, because that's nearly exclusively rental. And so if somebody owns a home, single-family home, and wants to build in a high-risk area, they can do that, but you can't put any public buildings there, nothing open to the public, nothing multi-family, and that's very clearly written in a number of areas of the law.
Okay.
So, you know, that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any further public comment? All right, then I'll close, oh, yes.
Let me get by for...
Oh, okay, very good.
John Milliken, 1256 Hudson. I've been following the Hunter Project EIR for, oh, a long, long time. I was at the original scoping sessions, the selection of the firm. Believe it or not, the first DEIR was knocked out in five months, came back, 90-day comment period is extended, and then it took 13 months, generated hundreds and hundreds of pages of public comment. Came back 13 months later, and nothing changed. I don't know what, you know, they just basically ignored the hundreds and hundreds of pages of comments. So it's been a suspect document from day one. And the thing that has occurred to me, it, it got finished ostensibly, and then September 13th, or September 13, it got going again, and there's just been this pattern of delay by the applicant, where they just don't seem to be interested in finishing this thing. And it just goes on and on and on, and I have, when a new city manager comes in, I gotta brief them and tell them what happened, how we got to this point, when a new planner comes in. And so, what the applicant will do, he'll withhold payment, he, he won't disagree with what's the studies that are being done, he won't provide information, they'll say they'll design an intersection down at Pope Street and Silverado Trail, and get it approved by the county to see if it's practical, and it never gets done, and then it gets pushed out, and then we have another delay, and more money, and it goes on and on and on and on. And I find this really analogous to imagine if an applicant had a project, and they said, okay, you have to do a EIR on your project, and they said, no, I'm not gonna do it. And you would say, well, I'm sorry, we're just gonna have to deny your application on the process, because you're not gonna do the EIR. What we have in this case is the applicant really not finishing or doing an EIR, and the delay of this EIR can be laid right at the feet of the applicant for everything. And so, the, the non-starter is just trying to complete the one that's been done already. That's not, never gonna work, the information is so old. Redoing the EIR, going down the same rabbit hole with another firm, also probably doesn't work as well. And so, the mayor, you asked for ideas from the public, and how to extract ourselves and save soft costs and save money. I am really recommending that you deny the application of the applicant without prejudice, saying that you've been unable to produce an EIR, provide the information for the EIR, you've consumed incredible time with the public, the staff, city council, planning commission, consultants, and everything, and it's just not happening. So, just say, we're gonna deny your application without prejudice, because you can't produce an EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further public comment?
Hi, Tim Neiman, St. Helena. Kind of a little different option than that. If you're gonna go ahead with an EIR, I would strongly encourage you to agendize this as an item, to make sure that it is a clean EIR. As the planning director said, the recommendation is that it's probably going to be a clean EIR, but they also mentioned the fact that you might bring in the consultant to just add on to the old report. And in, in my experience, that doesn't work very well. If you, if you bring somebody on secondhand to adopt somebody else's work and try to defend it, invariably, they're not nearly as confident in the work, and more importantly, the audience that's listening to that is not as confident in what they're hearing. I think a good analogy here might be the Infrastructure Subcommittee. I know I brought that up as an analogy two weeks ago, but I think it applies here as well. The mayor might remember, in November 2009, when we were talking about that in city council, the idea was just to simply review the consultant's work and come back with conclusions, and one of the council members even said, oh, we'll be back in a few weeks with an answer here. Well, when the group got together, we elected not to do that. We elected to do a quality job instead of a speedy job. We started back at the beginning, we rebuilt all of the models in different software, and we did it because we had to make sure we understood all of the issues, that we trusted the results we were coming up with, and that we could confidently portray those results out to the public. And I think you've got a similar problem here. If we just bring in a consultant, bolt on a few extra studies to a report that is now quite old, you'll have a serious credibility problem. So I would urge you to agendize this, and make sure that it is, it is a direct, a directive to have it as a clean EIR. It's a big project, it's a risky project, the public and the city deserve to have a, have a top-notch EIR on this, and not something that's kind of bolted together. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any further public comment?
Good evening, I'm Vicki Bradshaw, I'm a resident of St. Helena, and my comments kind of tie into what John said. If you look at the staff report, the major, probably responsibility for all the problems that have ended up with this EIR lay at the foot of the developer. As Noah mentioned, in September of 2013, when it was before the planning commission, the developer withdrew it, wanting to put additional information in, or wanting to overcome some of the problems... some of the problems with the EIR. That was their decision. It was before the planning commission. Then it went back to urban planners, according to the staff report. In mid-2016, a year ago, urban planners told them they needed additional information after consulting with the staff, and it would require addition and funding, $25,000 or something similar to that. It took almost a year before the developers got back on, or at least 10 months, to get back on whether or not they were gonna fund that $25,000, and they didn't get back with all the information. I think there's still information that's outstanding. So it's not the city's fault. It certainly isn't the staff's fault. All of the problems on the delays seem to lay at the foot of the developer. And I agree, I don't think you can piecemeal an EIR together and have it defensible over the long haul. So I think at the very least, we have to start out with a new ER, EIR, and perhaps the city would want to consider what John suggested. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Any further public comment? Yeah.
Hi again, Anne McGarrel, St. Helena. I wanna say thank you for your service to everyone. It's a huge job and a lot of time and effort, and it's much appreciated on everyone's part. I realize that this is supposed to be just a receive and file, but I think it's in all our best interest to simply agendize this for actual council discussion. It's, so the new city manager who's not here, although you're doing a great job, Andrew, and the public, so wasn't it, can take the time to decide what the requirements for the new EIR will be, or if there is an option to simply say enough is enough. It's an enormous project, and it's a contentious project. And the staff report said that the request was sent out on June 29 to three firms, and the city is requesting their interest in completing the DEIR. Really, the city should be requesting the city, excuse me, the consultants conduct, not complete, a new EIR. This one was dropped by the wayside, it's five years old, it was dropped basically by the developer who has stalled and stalled. Now the EIR consultants of five years actually are quitting, and there's no longer a single member of the city staff who is ever involved in the original project here, nor is there anyone who was originally involved in the flood project that's basically where this project is gonna be built here. Nobody is, the engineers, everybody is gone, the city managers. So basically, the city's lost all the institutional knowledge, both inside and outside on this particular project. And the request went out on the 29th, and, you know, I think the new city manager was in place, although I don't see him yet, on July 1st. So, you know, maybe just to wait, just re-agendize it, bring him back for discussion, it's a big deal, and make sure that you know what's going on in terms of the requirements that are being asked. I think that, you know, there's really no rush. Just to be clear, this, this city deserves a fully EIR done, just to be clear, the project will be built on the very flood plain that FEMA itself called, in quotes, "one of the highest repetitive flood loss locations in California." And that was on the City of St. Helena grant application, so we concurred with that. There is no rush, the developer, I don't think, even has representation here. No one was involved in the history of it, and the new EIR people don't seem to even know who's gonna be responsible for what. So please just re-agendize this before the staff goes down too far a road to evaluate what these firms have to say, to make sure that you actually know what's being required and what's being requested before, you know, all of this goes much farther.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? All right, let me close public comment. Let me begin by saying that I appreciate very much the public comment. I think I indicated in my opening comments that, at least for me, a likelihood is that I would want to see a clean EIR. I do agree with the suggestion. Tonight, the only thing we can do is receive and file, but I do agree with the suggestion that we should agendize this again, once our new city manager is on board, which would be sometime in August. He actually starts just at the end of July, and that we should, we should, the agenda item would be consideration by the council and direction to staff about what we want in the EIR, whether it's an upgrade or a clean one as expressed here, but perhaps with Mr. Brown's effort, it can be, the legal expression can be tightened. And also, I'd like to hear from the city attorney as to whether, at this point, the city has the ability simply to terminate the process without any real risk of legal liability, given the delay, which seems very much the responsibility of the developer. No, that's my suggestion.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Doring? I've got two agreements over here.
I do agree. I just would like to say that there is one comment in the email that we received that indicated that it was not entirely the developer, that they did refer to staff changes. To be fair, I agree with the assessment of the public that the vast majority of these delays are on behalf of the developer, but our own consultant acknowledges that there was some staff turnover and that may have caused some delay, and we have to be cognizant of that important statement in that email which jumped out at me. Thank you.
All right, we want to be fair to the facts, for sure.
I would just like to indicate, staff fully intends to bring back any item back for council direction, obviously. However, it felt as important, A, to get the information out as soon as possible, let the public know what's occurring, and B, to actually have some substantive information for the council to discuss, namely, the responses from the consultants to see what options we have under this, the choice to use two very reputable, or three very reputable firms, a choice of them before seeking council direction, just so you had some, some things to chew on essentially before you provided direction.
Okay, very good. The next item on our agenda is city council discussion direction regarding the cancellation of the July 25, 2017 regular city council meeting. I must say, I thought that we had agreed to cancel it, but apparently I overplayed my memory, we had a discussion of it. I would say I will not be here, I'll be in Europe on that day. I would hope that the council would agree to cancel the meeting, but at this point... Oh, Ms. Black, I was supposed to turn to you. All right.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I just wanted to note that historically, the council has gone dark the second meeting in July, or the second meeting in October, I'm sorry, August, and staff plans accordingly. There was a discussion to cancel the meeting, and we were waiting to kind of see if there was business. It's a course up to the council. I will note that at the July 25 meeting, that Mr. Ellsworth will be on vacation, Vice Mayor White will not be in attendance, and Mayor Galbraith will not be in attendance. So we would, we actually will not have a quorum.
I think you need to have three people physically present under state law.
That is correct.
So if three cannot be physically present, you can't hold, you can't meet the requirement. But I must say that, that I had thought, at the time we discussed cancellation, that was most unlikely, we would have the new city manager on board before the end of July, given the fact that even if we were to hire one in June, whoever we hired would have to give a 30-day notice at least of moving on. So it seems to me that it's, it's more important, if we can do it, to have our meeting in August when we have our new city manager on board and take off the one in July. But I think that the answer speaks for itself at this point. Three of us won't be here, so.
Is there public comment?
Yeah, I can open it to public comment, sure.
I'm Bobby Monet, I am speaking as a resident, not as a planning commissioner. I was just thinking, there'll be two people here, it could be two people here, and we, it has been discussed in the past that we could have, you know, we've talked about ways to communicate, for the council to communicate with the public, and with certain kinds of meetings, and the Brown Act would allow two council members to be here, if the two members who are here would be interested in having a meeting that would be open to the public to come and discuss issues that are on their minds, or, you know, have like a town hall meeting with, with two representatives of the council, since, you know, maybe those two people were planning on coming, I don't know, it just seemed like an opportunity for an extra way to connect with the community around certain issues. You could even agendize certain issues that have been up and, and have it be a little more casual than a regular meeting, but have it still be a forum. So, just a suggestion.
All right, thank you.
I'll be here, Mary. No, I'm not looking forward to that, it's a good suggestion.
All right.
There may be other logistical issues.
Any further public comment? I'll close public comment. Well, it looks like, as they say, raise ipso loquito, right? It speaks for itself, we won't have a meeting in July since three of us cannot physically be present, so there we are.
I would just say, next year, let's, let's get our ducks in a row so we all know what's happening. I mean, I, we never did vote to do it. I know now that the staff has planned their vacations and nobody wants to upset everybody's plans, but I think we could, I don't know, we'll work it out with the new manager in the future. I'm appreciative of the fact that we're getting a lot of reporting tonight about what is going on so that people know what's happening and we don't just drop the ball, because we do have a lot on our plate right now.
Okay, very good. That takes us to our next item. City council discussion and direction regarding the status of the tree committee. Ms. Black, and did we lose Mr. Yurby? Oh, there he is. I can't see over this lecture, that's the problem, that's why I miss Mr. Milliken, too.
Mr. Mayor and council, as you know, I have hit the pavement trying to drum up business for our boards and committees. And we did not receive one application to fill any of the vacancies on the tree committee. As it stands, as of July 1, we only have two members of the seven-member board, therefore we do not have a quorum and we cannot conduct business. So I provided an item before you for discussion. If Acting City Manager Smithies would like to chime in, and also Carlos is here.
So as we started getting discussion, and our city attorney told us we couldn't talk about last month, we have a certain issue with, with our municipal code and the way it's written with, as far as delegation to the Public Works Director or his designation, city arborist, as far as discretion on taking out trees. The ordinance will say the commissions, the committee's meant to appeal the Public Works Director's decisions, and then the next sentence, I think, everything in the public right of way, including heritage trees, is, needs to go to a tree commission for approval, for authorization to remove. So it's kind of hard to have that quorum when we can't get a tree committee. And I'll can let Carlos Yurby give us a rundown on how long they've been trying. He gave me a rundown about five resignations in the past year in trying to get more folks on board, we've only had two apply in since February of 2016. So it's, I mean, it's been an ongoing problem since February a year ago, and here we are with no applicants and only two for the committee. So we also have two pending applications for tree removal. So if we don't, we need direction tonight on, on what we do with those two current ones. Do, does the city council give us direction to approve those at the public works discretion? Or do we bring those to city council every meeting when a tree committee, a person comes with a permit to remove trees in the public right of way? Whether it's tearing up the city sidewalk and we're telling them they have to fix the sidewalk, but the tree's doing the damage to the sidewalk, that's a lot of the ones we're getting, or they need to replace their driveway to meet the current ADA compliances of their design review and planning, planning approval, conditions of approval, and yet they can't move forward without that tree removed. So with that, if you have any questions more of us, or you can have Carlos talk some more on that, but...
And I think, Erica, you hit it right on the head. The two that we have, without getting too much into details, are specifically that with, with ADA ramps. And, and both of them are like that. And there's actually a third one, a third permit. I believe it's pruning, which wouldn't necessarily need to come to council. We could take, handle it on our end, pending, having, getting direction from you guys.
I have a question. May I?
Sure.
I'm wondering if we change our ordinance and made the tree committee simply, or solely a, an appeal body, would that attract more of our citizens to apply? Because theoretically, they would probably be meeting less often. In other words, Public Works, whoever you make the decision, you make the initial decision, somebody's not happy with that, then they would appeal. If you had that kind of a system in place, which I know, maybe not with trees, but other kinds of issues that come up, there would be sort of standing bodies are available to hear an appeal, and they would, maybe they would meet, instead of every month, it would be every two or three months, and maybe that would be more attractive to residents to consider. That's a question and a statement, I guess, but I don't know what, what your thoughts are on that.
Go ahead. Well, it seems like that they're meeting monthly. I mean, Carlos lives in Breville, whereas like the Active Transportation Sustainability Committee, which has already merged, you know, one committee now, it's two committees into one, if there's lack of business, there's, you know, there's no meeting that month. And there's a lot of meetings with the tree committee. I'm surprised at the number of tree permits that are coming through, just from the planning and design element of it with the plan checks, that there, everyone needs a tree removed and it all has to go to the tree committee, even though it, it's, it seems common sense that they need to be removed, especially if they're not a heritage tree, they're not a significant interest, they're, you know, less than four inches, or as some of them have been, what, scrub trees is?
More scrub trees, right.
So, I mean, that would be our recommendation, that's a great idea. I mean, I can let Carlos speak for that as well and how that would work.
I was kind of looking, I think I mentioned here, I was looking over neighboring cities and kind of what they do, and perfect example, City of Napa, they meet, they actually plan out for five meetings, so it's kind of quarterly for the entire, for the entire year, their tree committee.
I guess my question is whether, if you have a committee that meets only quarterly, whether that's servicing the needs of folks that need action in a timely way, or whether it's just too much delay, at least for some applicants. So I guess what I'm...
But it would only be on the appeal, right? If we just said, "Look, all decisions are made at the staff level," and then those rare, I would hope it'd be rare, because most of these are actually mundane, I think, and pretty straightforward. If the vast majority of the, of the permits are that way, I think it's gonna be a rare issue that comes to the, to the committee.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I don't know.
They'll only come up presumably in the context of the denial of an applicant's request. Mostly, they're granted.
Right, which our current, our current MUNICode, actually, that's at that point where it goes, if it's denied, they have 10 days to, to appeal, then goes through the director, then city council gets an opportunity to, to review.
You know, I've only been going to the tree committee for a few months, I hope I wasn't the cause of this disinterest. My impression is that they don't get a lot of satisfaction out of dealing with these permits. I mean, they rely on you to a large extent and to the staff, and what they really wanted to do was the master tree list and the meteor, more interesting stuff. And it seems to me that this is something that we could handle a lot at the staff level and maybe make the appeal to the council or a subcommittee of the council, or it could be the council, we meet every two weeks. So it would be, to reconstitute or keep the committee in place just to hear appeals, I don't think you're gonna get a lot of applicants who want to do that. And we seem to be having a lot more success lately, bringing people on to do certain things. And if you were, if, if we go through our goal-setting and we decide we really want to get into the ordinance again and the surveying, you know, maybe we constitute a temporary committee or something. A lot of people are just, I think, reluctant to put aside the time every, every month, and this particular committee meets in the middle of the afternoon.
The Director Houss, if I may chime in, just had a great idea that maybe if it's going to design review anyways, maybe that, we get a planning commission for appeals.
You know, the question is, who's got the, who's got the expertise to hear the appeal? You know, I mean, and that's why I say people really are relying on our staff, who, and I feel that the committee does to a large extent, just in watching over a couple of months.
And that's why we pay for a certified arborist on our staff.
Right. You know, and so I'd be in favor of having the initial decision being made, you know, in the Public Works Department.
Right, I think, I think we all agree with that.
And then, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to get people on the committee just so they can hear appeals, because I, I think that they're not applying now, and maybe if the task is really the more interesting stuff that they want to work on, maybe we would have some... people. Or if we made it an ad hoc thing to work on, you know, the tree ordinance or something, instead of having a standing committee. I think, when I've been here, half of the meetings have been canceled for lack of a quorum, probably.
I think the, tonight, we just need to focus on how we deal with the current situation. And so, my suggestion would be that the staff make the decision, and that any appeal of the staff decision come to the City Council. Let's see how that goes, and if we get too many of them, then we think about putting the appeal to the planning commission. But my problem with putting it in the planning commission is that you could end up with two stages of appeal, and that's not a happy situation either. You want, you need to get to finality relatively quickly. And I would urge that if we have to rewrite, rewrite the code a little bit to accomplish this, that in an appeal of a decision by staff on this issue, that there be no fee in terms of appealing the decision to the City Council. They get one free appeal here.
Yeah, and I think in large part, these permits are always granted. I mean, there've been very few, a couple of...
The only one in my recent recollection, and it wasn't, not that it was not granted, it was tabled for lack of supporting documents by the permittee. So, that's actually one of them. He was on the last month. There was two similar situations. One of them actually had the gentleman there presenting maps, and it seemed to be a little bit more appealing for the tree committee. Second one, for whatever reason, he wasn't able to attend, and instead of even denying it, it was delayed. So, yeah, we haven't denied anyone.
Let me see if there's any public comment.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, there is a resolution in your packet directing, perhaps you might look that over, and if you want to further review and add...
Point four, hold on here. Yeah, I read that.
I tried, I tried.
Well, and we would recommend that if the council were inclined to do this, that the resolution be expanded to also direct staff to come back with the appropriate paperwork memorializing that. But I'm hearing that there's interest in perhaps giving us additional direction as well, that we would come back with the appropriate paperwork as well.
Right. Well, or more than just the paperwork, with the proposed change to the ordinance. Oh, okay. Yeah, is there any, is there any public comment? I don't see any public comment. Is everybody agreeable to where we are at this point?
I am, and, but I just wanted to say that I like that, this idea, because then if somebody does appeal it, it's timely, as opposed to if there's a quarterly meeting and everybody has to wait. This way, an appeal would come fairly quickly.
Right. And I think that to tie in with, and it's only with removals, and it stems from, let's see, back with whenever renew in Carnegie, we actually also give ourselves for removal a 15-day notice. So, everyone within a certain radius gets notified of the removals. They have their opportunity to chime in with their concerns. We would receive them, we'd give them a deadline, gives us an opportunity to review them. If we need to pull people in, we can follow up with maybe phone calls and then take action. But you're right, it has to do more with being able to service the public in a timely fashion.
Right.
Not let it, you know, sit for another two weeks.
All right. So, do you have the direction you need at this point? Do you need a formal motion?
Yes, I do.
All right, well then...
To adopt, to adopt the resolution with amended...
Adopt the resolution with the additional, with the additional change, or with the addition that staff is to bring back an ordinance, which puts the discretion to address tree removal applications with the city, and any appeal coming to the City Council with no fee associated with the appeal.
What do we do with all the other provisions?
About the tree committee that are in here?
Well, I would suggest that we get this out of the way so that, so that we can move forward here, and at some point, the whole, it's probably going to have to be a much further, deeper review of the ordinance, but at least let's do this much tonight.
Okay, so they can, we can at least continue with the business at hand.
That's right. We need to continue with the business at hand. So, I've made a motion. Is there a second, I hope? Ms. Black.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes.
Councilor Doring.
Yes.
Ellsworth.
Yes.
Koberstein.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, yeah. This takes us to the discussion. Oh, okay, a plea for a break. So, we'll come back at 8:25. Good evening. Let me reconvene our meeting. And the next item on our agenda, an item placed on the agenda by Councilmember Ellsworth. City Council Discussion and Consideration of a Possible Large Commercial Truck Ordinance, including consideration of a direction on drafting of such an ordinance. So, Mr. Ellsworth, this is your item. Do you want to lead off?
Sure. Responding to a number of citizens who were interested in starting to look at the impacts of large trucks driving through neighborhoods, and if there's a way that we can control it to some degree, started working on an ordinance by looking at other cities that have large truck ordinances. And I talked with Tom and worked through his office with, with one of the attorneys to put together a draft ordinance. The limitation would come by weight, weight of the vehicle. And so, people have brought up safety issues with large trucks going through residential areas where kids are, and then also the impacts of the, the weight of vehicles on our roads. So, this is a draft ordinance, just getting started. One of the considerations is how something like this would be enforced. And we would need to discuss it further with the police chief to see if there's an ability to enforce something like this. So, that just begins, this is a starting point of the discussion, and this draft ordinance is, is meant to, to be that, so we can start getting input.
Okay. Any other initial council discussion? Let me open it up to the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to comment on this?
Counsel, Mayor, Mark Smithers, 1819 Balaheau Street. I want to thank you for working towards the completion of a heavy truck and, truck and heavy vehicle ordinance that will provide many benefits to the neighbors and our town, safety, livability, reduce traffic, and reduce wear and tear on our residential streets. It appears that you are trying to keep it simple and easy to follow, which is an important thing, and I think would help enforcement. My main concern is in the area of exceptions, or as it's described in the ordinance, is inapplicability, and I request that you minimize the exceptions as much as possible. Generally speaking, there is no good reason for heavy trucks and large vehicles of any kind to be exceptions to the truck ordinance, with the obvious exceptions of emergency vehicles and non-commercial vehicles such as RVs. With the draft definition of direct route, UPS trucks and garbage trucks are allowed to travel through residential streets. All large and heavy vehicles, heavy, all, all large trucks and heavy vehicles create the same safety concerns and neighborhood livability issues. They are loud, most spew diesel exhaust in our yards and homes, and they destroy our streets in the same manner. Exceptions will make the ordinance less easy to follow and more difficult to enforce. Large and heavy vehicle operators act just the same as automobiles and will go out of their way to avoid traffic on Highway 29. By restricting as many trucks and heavy vehicles from our residential streets, you are doing them a favor. You significantly decrease their risk of hitting a child or an adult walking or biking through our neighborhoods to and from schools and parks. I've spoken with the tour bus operators, and they say they avoid Highway 29 because they can. Nothing prevents them from driving through our residential streets. Just yesterday, three large moving vans, the size of semi-trucks, drove down South Crane heading south. Additionally, most large and heavy vehicles cannot drive within their lanes or negotiate many, many turns legally through residential streets. Highway 29 provides lights at certain intersections with turn lanes that allow them to more successfully enter and leave our neighborhood streets. And just today, in the New York Times Science section, there's an article on the adverse physical effects of riding bikes near traffic, which include asthma and lung cancer. These impacts affect residents as well as deter us, deter us from riding bikes around town. The truck ordinance will help us towards our town's goal of getting us to bike and walk around town and get out of our cars. And just, I didn't have it here, but just one quick one. As far as enforcement goes and the police force, I think it would be pretty easy, because any commercial truck is going to have a manifest and know where they're going. And so, if, if the police pull them over because they're driving down Valley View or South Crane, and they had to have entered from here or there, you can find out where they're going. And so, anyway, I think enforcement wouldn't be that difficult, if you write the thing simply and don't have a lot of exceptions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any?
Hello, Peter Scott, St. Lena Residence, 1905 Birch Street, over this way. Well, first, I want to thank the council and staff members for your service. Thank you for serving our community. Hard work, but good thing you get big paychecks from us. I want to address this issue. It's a very timely issue, and I'm glad that Councilman Ellsworth has agendized this. Couple of things I want to bring up, to follow up on what Mark just said. I grew up in the Midwest, and I travel out east a lot, and it's not uncommon for towns our size to have a bypass. our size to have a bypass for heavy truck traffic, non-downtown. And it's usually signs leading into town say, "Non-delivery truck traffic must use this route." In our case, that would probably be the trail at two ends of town, presumably Deer Park and possibly Zimphandel or something like that. I'd like to throw that out as a possibility that the staff would look at. You'd have to work with Caltrans, et cetera, but non-delivery vehicles is a good way to identify that. On to more specific occasions where heavy traffic is coming through our town, of course, of course, it's a lot easier to cut through the neighborhoods and sit in traffic going through downtown. We happen to live in an area on North Crane and Birch Street that abuts what I'm calling an outdated industrial zone over there that holds Harold Smith &amp; Son and A&amp;J Vineyard Supply. Both those operators have 18,000 to 40,000-pound vehicles and then other businesses on a regular basis. And in order to access those properties, Harold Smith has Charter Oak, which they're supposed to use, but not required to use. They have a North Crane gate, and they have a Valley View gate that their vehicles frequently use. They'll say they just use the North Crane for in-town deliveries or jobs and so forth, but unless they have a job every single day, I don't believe that to be the case. Harold, excuse me, A&amp;J Vineyard went into that location where Whiting Nursery was. I don't know if everybody remembers where that was, but they went in with a permit of two to three delivery trucks a week. They do two to three 18-wheeler trucks a day into that location. Either the trucks either come up Sulfur Spring, up Grayson, across South Crane, past Crane Park, press the elementary school, sometimes the high school, pass the bicycle lane, and then down residential Birch Street. I didn't bring the pictures, but I would be happy to send everyone here pictures of all these huge, massive 18-wheelers going in and out of our neighborhoods on a daily basis. It's wrong, it's not safe. The operators are good people, but they've simply outgrown their use permit, and it's time for them to, for our city to enforce the laws, and for them as operators to consider whether that's an appropriate location. That's all I have for now. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Let me close public comment and invite council discussion. I guess maybe I'll lead off, and you have a lot on your plate, Mr. House. Where does this fit in?
Actually, it's probably more appropriate for Public Works Director. She generally regulates, she generally regulates public property, and we do more in the private room.
Actually, Chief Imboden and I, we're the police chief, and I were discussing this today, and he actually sent me a list. He couldn't be here tonight. And the biggest concern is enforcement. Unless we have an officer designated to follow these trucks on the south side of town to the north side of town, to see what their most direct route is to where they're delivering their goods, it's going to be hard to enforce trucks that are going through the neighborhoods. One of the reasons for the exceptions of the way they are is that there is state highway code that allows deliveries to go to a certain address. We can't stop commerce. It's a public road. So that's where the enforcement issue comes in. And they can't just stop a truck and question them for their manifest. They have to do something wrong. So unless we're going to go down a different path and hire another officer to follow these trucks going around, it's going to be difficult to enforce. Because there is definitely damage to streets when you have big rigs going up and down. And if there's an operation issue, that's something that we could take a look at, but that's the crux of the situation, is that the enforcement on a vehicle going down the street, I for one get sometimes UPS, I hate to say, use myself as an example, that you get the huge UPS trucks, and I don't know how they negotiate some of the turns that they do when you're in rural areas, but they do, and we can't stop them. You know, the garbage trucks, they do a lot of damage because of the weight limitations in their vehicles when they're fully loaded, and it's an ongoing issue. I'm glad there's something to address it, though, because it does help enforcement when someone does get stuck, and they shouldn't have gone down a certain route, whether they had commerce down there or not. We definitely know there are a lot of folks that are probably going out of their way to avoid the congestion of 29 and/or Silveraw Trail. We already have signs on Pope Street and Pratt Street Bridge. Pratt Street is actually the county's bridge, but there are signs there saying they're not a truck route. People get stuck there all the time. I don't know if one of our fellow residents always reports on that, having to have negotiate the trucks, Anthony McKelley, off the bridges, because they get stuck there. They ignore the signs. So, and then we get the calls about the people turning down Park Street. Unless we catch them in the act, it's going to be hard for a truck driver, because if it's Barringer, you know, if it's Vineyard's trucks, you know, we have to have someone sit there, camp out, and watch them, you know, avoiding Pratt. For example, I know that's one of the areas that are concerned, Cornella and Pratt. So, it's an ongoing issue to have an ordinance. I think it helps implement change, but again, it's going to come down enforcement and how we can actually react to it.
Well, in terms of enforcement, I certainly want to hear from the city attorney, not necessarily tonight, as to what the strongest possible financial penalties are if appropriately caught. But, well, he may not know the answer tonight.
Well, you're, so, now it's set up as, there would be discretion. The chief has indicated he would prefer this be set as a misdemeanor, not as an infraction. The fine there would be $1,000. You also have some ability to impose civil penalties. Those are also limited by state law to $1,000, and those would be, those would be the penalties.
I mean, the penalties are awfully light, in my view. Particularly the civil penalty is too light, quite frankly. Probably was set many, many years ago and never revised by the legislature. But, you know, I'm sympathetic to having an ordinance if we can have the appropriate signage and so on.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know under what criteria you can actually stop somebody. I heard what you said. But I also recall the chief telling us he was going to get an army of volunteer people who were going to be working for the police department, and this might be just the thing for some of them, you know?
I'd be a little concerned of false imprisonment claims.
Well, I would like to know, you know, what gives you good cause to stop somebody and say, "Where are you going?", to even know, you know, if you can write a ticket. But I would suspect that even the signage itself or something would have some deterring effect on people.
So, one thing that might be useful would be for someone to contact those cities that do have these ordinances. The one that we drafted here was based on models that we obtained from a variety of different Northern California communities, and to the extent there's interest in that, someone could contact their police departments or public works departments and find out what their enforcement mechanisms are in history, and whether they've had some success in that or not.
Can you have anybody nearby that's doing this?
We looked at Berkeley and Fremont primarily.
Maybe it's a conversation with Berkeley or Fremont, they're close, and saying what they do. My thought is that if we sort of establish a policy and get an ordinance and enforce it a few times, hopefully the people who consistently do that know that it's now in place here. So, as somebody was saying, they know there's not an ordinance, so they do this, but if they know there is an ordinance, maybe they'll stop.
I do have a contact at the City Pedal Limer, because that's where I used to work, and we quite frankly were getting, like, detours. When 101 was shut down, the southern end of town, we had a contractor and some other high industrial businesses that would, that was their route. And they had to get permission from the city engineer before they could, and to, before they could use the downtown Pedal Boulevard for their route. Also, because we had restrictions on our bridge, and they had turning restrictions, you have tight radiuses. I could reach out to the city engineer there, as well as now the police chief, Kinsavano, find out what they do.
And I'll call our police chief and set up a meeting, just to have a conversation with him.
Okay. So, why don't we go down that road? I'd like to hear from the police chief publicly here as well. And so, why don't we say we'll re-agendize this when our police chief is available in August, and have a further follow-up discussion, and see where the public works director is with respect to what her contacts do, if that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Dorian?
Well, I'm supportive of a truck ordinance. I see, I see that it will basically move the problem onto Highway 29, which is a reality, but maybe that's what the community is insisting upon. I'm sure there are people who live on Main Street who go, "You know, we're residents too." But I, you know, it's a difficult dilemma that we have there. I'm wondering if there are parts of this ordinance, or there are suggestions from the community, by a couple of commentators, on ideas that maybe we would want to send to our Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee to explore. It seems like this is something, that research and that investigation and seeing how others handle it, I don't want to delay. I think people, "Oh, study it." I'm not intending to delay. I think we need to move forward on a truck ordinance, but the other aspects of it in terms of the potential for a bypass and other things, and just, you know, our Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee knows our city, so when you get this model ordinance, it may not exactly fit our circumstances. And it would be, I don't want to drag it out there forever, but it'd be something of interest that they would maybe want to have input in. So that was just a suggestion on my part.
I think it's an interesting suggestion, too. Absolutely.
I would also add one thing. We've used, in drafting this, we used our standard template for many of our ordinances with respect to SEQA. And I'm not sure that the standard template here, that this will absolutely have no environmental impact, is necessarily one that we want to just assume is correct. And so I think that before we bring it to the council for ultimate adoption, I think someone ought to explore that a little bit more deeply than we have. In other words, the template here simply says, "The adoption of this ordinance is exempt from SEQA," and I'm not sure that that is something that, yeah, I'm seeing that Planning Director House is saying that he'll give a look at.
Okay. Good. All right. That then takes us to 9.6. This is your item, Ms. Coburnstein, Adoption of Protocol Regarding Preparation of Resolutions for Matters Considered on Appeal.
Yeah, I just would like to bring this to the council for discussion. We've had several appeals lately, two, three, four, and we sometimes come to the meetings, and we have, like, battling resolutions, one to grant the appeal, one to deny. And I think it, to some people in the audience, it might be perceived that we are already leaning one direction or another because we have this resolution in our packet. But I also think that when we are here and we have our discussion, we really elaborate more on our reasons and some of the findings that should be perhaps in these resolutions, in which case they have to come back to us again. So, I think it would maybe conserve some staff time, that they don't prepare one or two before we even have our discussion. And then we have some time when we are finishing the appeal to actually talk about our personal reasons, findings, that we feel were the reason for our vote, so that then the resolution could be prepared, and it could just be one thing, wouldn't be done once and then revised. But I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Well, my understanding is that the practice that we follow is pretty much the standard practice, certainly been our practice for years, but my understanding, which may be wrong, is this is the practice that's typically followed by cities. Often, these appeals are coming from the planning commission, and the planning commission is often presented with both pro and con resolutions of the appeal, so that what is coming to us, I would not think it necessarily would be a lot of additional staff work. It's in terms of presenting the pros and cons in terms of a resolution, whether you're going to grant or deny the appeal. Is that roughly right?
So generally, staff prepares a resolution for the commission or the council based on their recommendation, the professional analysis that was done on it. And then if it's an appeal from the commission to the council, then the resolution is essentially prepared based on the commission's direction. In the circumstances where staff is uncertain what the decision may be, it's a practice in our department, and it's kind of a professional practice I picked up just in my professional career, to provide the council with options, should they choose to maybe not support the decision that was either being recommended by the staff or recommended by the commission. I can completely understand Councilmember Coburnstein's perspective, that that can lead to some confusion on the part of the public, if they see two resolutions in the packet, and, you know, why is this there? The resolution draft is provided as kind of a basis for the discussion, so the commission or the council or the public themselves can see what the basis for the decision is, so those findings that are identified as required to be looked at in justifying a decision, and then elaborated on as to why the council or the commission feels the findings can or cannot be made in certain instances. So I do feel it's important to always have a resolution in the packet as a starting point, but I'm completely open to direction from the council as to how they feel about that, obviously, and then if the direction is to not provide competing resolutions, then staff's happy to not do that. The entire intent is to facilitate decision-making, and if it's leading to a concern or confusion over the decision-making process, then that's obviously nothing staff would want to do.
I guess my concern is that we follow what cities and planning staffs generally perceive to be best practices, and that's what I assumed that we had been doing, and so I'm reluctant to, myself, to say that we should change how we've been going about it. To me, it's useful, productive, helps focus the discussion, and if it's best practice, we should be following it.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, there's also, often when the appeals come to you, they're on highly contested matters, and there will be a lot of input and information brought to you on the appeal. And in those cases, generally, Planning Director House and I have recommended that the council take a tentative vote or a sense vote, and then give direction to staff to come back at a subsequent meeting, often on the consent agenda, with a resolution containing findings that more fully memorialize the decision that was discussed by the council at the meeting, and the individual comments, as Councilmember Coburnstein has said. And unfortunately, when you have highly contested matters like these, in many cases, they'll lead to either a threat of litigation or actual litigation. And having a fully articulated set of findings that do, you know, accurately memorialize what you all have said during your deliberations is helpful to the city in defending litigation like that, and defending the validity of your decision as a council. The resolution, I often tell people, is the first document that a court looks at in any litigation. It is the description of what you've done and the explanation for why you've done it. And so typically, what we've tried to do is to say, "We're getting the council's sense of where you're going on this vote. Perhaps you'd like to direct us to come back with a more fully prepared set of findings at your next meeting." And that's a variation. That doesn't address the issue of whether you have draft resolutions in favor and against a project, but it certainly kind of is a reminder of what we try to do when there are these contested matters on appeals.
Well, where are we? I mean, I, to me, as I said, I would continue our present practice, which also gives the planning director considerable flexibility, as the city attorney just explained, too.
Well, I didn't know that our practice was to have two resolutions in front of us. I, you know, this bothered me when we had the CIA case, where we had a unanimous decision from the planning commission to deny the project, and we had two resolutions in our packet, to grant the appeal and to deny the appeal. And, you know, I think when we have these, I just prefer to kind of go the route that Tom just suggested, where we develop, you have your template. We always have the planning commission resolution in our packet because it's part of the underlying material. So there's no question what the planning commission decided, and I just think it's a better practice in our community a better practice in our community to develop the resolution during the appeal and have it come back at the next meeting. So we do capture everything.
And I could just, if I might add as well, that some of the value of having a draft resolution in your packet is that it will contain, at a very minimum, the bare-bones findings, what we call the boilerplate, that's required by your ordinances for you to make a decision, yea or nay, on any project. And so in some respect, either in a staff report or in a draft resolution, it is helpful for you to see those minimum findings that you need to make under your ordinances. You know, it's important for you, I think, to have that boilerplate, but I can't, you know, overemphasize how important it is as well to consider those a starting point and then to, you know, have those findings fleshed out with your individualized thoughts that come out after the hearing you get on the appeal.
I would just add, I do feel it's crucial to have a resolution in the packet. If the direction is to only bring one based on the staff recommendation and/or the Planning Commission's recommendation for their action, that's 100% understood and clear by staff. And I don't feel that the practice of providing two resolutions is, I mean, it's often done, it's done in multiple jurisdictions, but it's not something that significantly impedes the decision-making process. And if a decision by the council were to go against the staff recommendation or the commission's direction, that's, I would say, an outlier, so it's not going to be a significant impediment to decision-making processes, to not have two. So if it's leading to more confusion and concern on the council level than it's facilitating decision-making, staff would rather not do it.
Yeah, I just think it gives people the impression that somebody is betting already of how the, what the outcome is going to be. And it's just, to me, that's not good practice. I don't have a problem maybe having a template that is upholding the decision of the Planning Commission, and then we may throw it out. But to have the competing resolutions when you're starting the whole appeal, it creates, in some people's mind, a bit of a question of, do people already know what the decision's going to be? You know, it's, I'd like to remove that kind of concern.
I wouldn't. I think I could argue the opposite. By having competing resolutions, it's pretty clear you don't know what the decision's going to be. So I would stick with our current practice, which seems to be working quite well.
To me, I'm thinking if the bare-bones resolution for yea or nay are similar, in a sense, equally balanced in the basics, the bare bones, so that there's a building block, but that they're not, because it seems to me that if a resolution, if there's two provided and one is arguing in one way and not as strongly in the other, does it create a difficulty there, that it's not equal as it comes in?
I don't feel strongly one way or another. I think it's important to have a template. I typically just turn to the code. I really don't spend a lot of time reading those, I mean, I shouldn't say I don't read them, but they're not as important to me legally. I think the problem is you have three lawyers on this council, and so, you know, your first shot at it is like, I got other ideas. You know, so I think you both make valid points. I think it is, there may be some question whether it's misleading, but I do think that a template is important, at least one. I, you know, maybe we should try that practice of just having the one from the Planning Commission as the, sort of the neutral, that's what happened at the Planning Commission, and just, you know, we'll have to just state in our staff reports, you know, one sentence. That doesn't mean that this will be the, you know, final resolution, that, you know, in the recommendation, one way or another, you'll have that language in there to alert the public that the council could overturn this completely and create other findings that it deems important, so I'm okay.
I think that's a good idea. I just don't like the idea of competing resolutions on the same night. I don't know that that ever was our protocol.
I haven't looked as to what past directors have done or staff has done. That's something that I've done in my career, and I did it because the decision is de novo, so it gives, just as the mayor mentioned, it's a fresh start, it's a fresh look, but it seems to be causing more problems than it's solving, and so staff would rather just bring the recommendation resolution.
All right. All right. We'll defer to staff preference for the moment. Okay, that takes us to, I didn't open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment at public hearing on this? So I'll close the public hearing. I think we've had the discussion. That takes us to 9.7. Consideration, discussion, and possible direction and/or action following council discussion of the Adam Street RFPs at the June 27, 2017 council meeting with subpoints A through F, which I am not inclined to read into the record, they're right here. I guess, Ms. Coburnstein, that's your item, so why don't you lead off?
Yeah, this is something that actually Councilmember Doring and I had worked on in preparation for the last meeting. And speaking just for myself, I didn't feel that I wanted to vote to approve what was being recommended to us. I also didn't necessarily want to start all over and throw everything out. I do think this is an important issue for the community to work on, but I really believe we need a process and that we cannot get to a community discussion and a decision without a lot of information and a process that allows people to keep track of what we're doing and for them to participate. And so that led to the first A through E items, and then Jeff had mentioned item F during our brief discussion last time. So I don't know if you want to go through all of them or just one at a time?
The question I have is whether, this is a lot of detail. I would, you're focused on process. And I must say, it seems to me that we would benefit very well from the review and input of our new city manager with respect to these issues. And what I would really urge is that we wait for him to come on board and then have a real discussion of the process issue with his input and how he would propose that we proceed, especially in connection with further consideration of the Adam Street property. And I say that also in the connection that he's going to need to figure out and advise us with respect to how he wishes to balance staff time. And these issues that are posed here could obviously, not inappropriate, I don't mean to say otherwise, but could require a lot of staff time in the context of a new city manager who's also trying to get on, trying to learn the city in the first couple of months aboard. It seems to me unfair, quite frankly, to impose this type of direction on the city without giving the new city manager an opportunity to go through it and to express to us what his views of it are.
I wasn't intending to cut him out. I had talked to Erica about item A, for instance, like what is the timing of some of this, that the staff, you know, would have some time later this month to work with, we're suggesting here that we maybe have a temporary council subcommittee to help guide things along, so that we would have something for Mark to look at when he arrives. I mean, I know he's been watching us on TV. He's not unaware, you know, of what's going on. And I just have a concern that if we don't get started, we're going to be in this situation where we're going to go dark for six months, and then all of a sudden, we're going to wake up the whole city again and say, okay, now we're back into this. I certainly think item B would be something that we would want his input, direct input with April. I'm not suggesting all this stuff begin right away, but I frankly don't know.
Take item B as an example. It's, you know, I'm very much in favor, for example, of revising the long-term financial forecast that Ms. Phillips put together and revising it given new information. I'm not in a position to say, hey, this is something staff can or cannot do with relative expedition. I just don't know. And then in the context of revising it, I certainly have further thoughts as to issues that are coming before the city that are likely to require significant general fund money that were not previously factored into the long-term financial forecast. You know, so for example, when the new city manager comes in, I certainly hope to sit down with him and go through at least what I see is required here to do that. But I don't see us at the moment simply directing staff to do that. I think we need to hear from him and say, hey, what's realistic in terms of how soon I can get this together?
Well, perhaps we could start some of this, and we could have a discussion with him when he gets here. I think that item B, the most important thing, at least in my mind, was the civic buildings and projects. What is, where is the money for that? Is there any money for that? It's one of the bases on which people are saying we should consider selling this property because we need the money to do some things. And how can you answer that question if you haven't had somebody tell you, you know, what we have? You know, we might have some impact fee accounts that have a little bit of money in them, but I think it's important for people to understand and get the information. I'm not necessarily saying we need a huge, long-term financial forecast in a month, but I think we need the basic question of, which I assumed it would take him a few months when he gets here to get his arms around, how are we doing with our operating budget and do we have excess money there or not? Because it's an important question, at least in my mind, as to whether you would consider selling the property. There seems to be a need.
Well, let's just take City Hall as an example. I think we all agree, or at least I hope we all agree, that City Hall needs to be replaced. It's an old building, needs to be replaced.
I think we have to answer the question. I think somebody has to tell us, what would it cost to refurbish what we have, and would you even do that? Or is that a crazy idea?
Fair enough.
And that's item A.
Fair enough. That's hiring a person that's expert with respect to that. I've got no particular issue if city staff can do it, if they can come back and present us with a list of possible, or with a proposed RFP or, and a list of folks in the area, hopefully, that are skilled in evaluating buildings and saying whether they should or should not be replaced. But I would hope, here, this talks in terms of municipal properties and facilities. I would hope, though, that we were only talking about City Hall, the Railroad Avenue properties, for example, maybe the Carnegie Building, I don't know, but I would assume we're not talking about parks. I would assume we're not talking about the city parking lot on Oak Avenue.
I think we could prioritize them. I think for purposes of dealing with the Adams issue, you want to focus on where we have buildings, and secondarily, at some future point, maybe this RFP would say, maybe there's a stage two that we might ask you to do, and it's get into looking at the parks or get into looking at other vacant land, this question of those lots up around the reservoir.
That's a water fund issue. But isn't it appropriate to give our new city manager an opportunity to take a look at this and then come back and give us his view as to how we should proceed? That can be done, hopefully, at one of our August meetings, not the first one, but maybe the second one. And if he can't do it within that timeframe, he's going to tell us.
No, I think it's our job to tell the city manager what our priorities are, and I think this is an urgent matter, given the, you have folks waiting, we have an economic interest at stake. So I think we have to balance the needs, of course, of a new city manager coming on board, the needs of the staff, but I think what Mary's saying is keep the process rolling, that not have a break. And there's no huge expectations that all of a sudden, you know, next week, we're going to have, we're going to be ready for our piece. I don't think anyone, you know, conceivably would have that in mind. But to just sort of chip away at these things, keep the process rolling, at least think about it, have it on the radar screen. In my mind, it's simply to, with consultation with staff, move this up as a council priority. We do that all the time, to your great consternation, but I think it's important enough where something else has to fall back and this has to move up a little bit. I think it's important enough to do that. At the same time, I need, we need to know what our city manager is going to do, but I think the two could go together hand in hand.
Look, I agree, this is a priority, to understand the needs of our city buildings, particularly, not the city parks, but the city buildings. The city parks have great needs, too. I mean, that's, you know, and maybe you have to prioritize, but I think what I would like to see is perhaps from the city, and again, I don't know what is realistic in terms of timeframe, but perhaps the city could at least put together a list of folks that are expert in making these evaluations, and then come back and maybe other, City of Napa, for example, may well have folks that have undertaken to evaluate their buildings or the county, who are they, what do their RFPs or contracts look like? That all might be helpful in terms of not unduly deferring the process so that we can begin to focus on those issues. I quite agree with that.
And my thought is that it does us no harm to know what we have, to make the assessments of these areas, and ultimately, everything that we have, including what's in the water enterprise. You know, we need to know what we've got and what we've got to work with. So whether it's prioritized in a certain way, that's okay, but there's nothing wrong with starting a process to say what we have. So that's where I'm at.
Well, I would urge that we focus, as this resolution says, on the general fund assets. Resolution here, or the proposed statement, maybe that's a better way of putting it, under B, says not including water and wastewater. So those are different enterprises.
And we start here, then we can get this done, we can move to that, maybe. But starting to learn what we have, I mean, that's what we do in our homes and businesses.
I think our city manager wants to chime in here.
Well, definitely, one of the things is that we cut a lot of our funding to our civic budget this year because we took $800,000 of our general fund and put it towards Upper York Creek dam removal. Where are the funds going to come from to hire this consultant to do this? And are we just going to go up to an RFP with no money allocated for it? Or are we going to include that in the discussion tonight?
Well, again, I think that's an issue that the city needs to bring to our attention, and the new city manager needs to chime in on that. Maybe I should open this for the public hearing for a few minutes and then...
Maybe we could tap the reserves, like we so often do, for some money for a study.
I'm not happy about tapping reserves. Go ahead.
I told you, all of my topics were on the same calendar. I can't believe it, kids.
Consider me in on a police station on your CIP.
But we do have these changing dynamics around us, that's all I want to say. I'd like to incorporate the maps that I gave you earlier in this discussion because hiring a consultant to tell you what your property's worth when you can't sell it for development by law now because of the earthquake fault zone seems a little bit backward. And I've been told, well, we don't have any money for a police station. I'm giving you this because you have a long-term lease that's paid off here in two years, and guess what? The principal and interest on a new police station is less than what this is. So we're not talking about putting a new dent in the general fund to develop what the state law requires because we need an emergency operations center now. This is, you'll get into this when you start getting your map served on you by the state that takes away a lot of zoning privileges. So one thing substitutes for another is not going to put a dent on any of the new cash, and it's a very doable thing. This comes from the financial report last June. Thank you. You know, that police station, we need it.
Okay.
Glenn Smith, Dean York Lane. My only comment is that two weeks ago, we had a very active and involved group here seeking the council's commitment to looking at alternatives to... seeking the council's commitment to looking at alternatives to giving some context to their voice. And my thought would be that to delay any action would appear to the public as, in a sense, disregarding their deep concerns. And I think my, I would suggest that you move forward. You're not necessarily committing to specific tasks on specific dates. You're committing to some principles. And I think it warrants your serious consideration to move ahead tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Burton on 1000 Fulton. I think this was, 9.7 was a very well-thought-out direction that this city should take a look at and consider giving this, Mr. Mayor, giving this to the new gentleman in charge and see what he thinks. But I think it's the first time I've seen a document from the city council that really looks like it's been well-thought-out. You have to have a foundation to start. You can't just spend. You can't just think. You can't dream. You've got to have a foundation before you could do any of these things. And I think all of these, from A through F, should be considered to be at least implemented, taken a look at, discussed, forum committees, whatever you want to do with it. But I think we need to follow this.
Okay, thank you.
Ann Carr, Dean York Lane. I have a question. Is it possible to get a copy of the 2009 Adams Street visioning?
Sure. Send an email to the city clerk. I think it's on the city website somewhere.
Just trying to find it.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. And I'd like to echo Mr. Smith's comments about moving forward with citizen involvement in this issue. You all have been hearing from citizens for a long time now about their concerns about the possible sale of the Adams Street property to meet the needs of the city, which certainly is a valid, one valid approach. But it has seemed to me, being a part of these meetings several times, that the majority of citizens here, at least the ones who care enough to come and speak at meetings, are quite opposed to the sale of that property, at least as it has been proposed by the council or by, not necessarily by the RFPs. And I think you need to listen to your citizenry. And I think one way to show that you're doing that would be to create a committee of citizens, an ad hoc committee, and bring this information to that committee and bring, let the people know that you want the citizens to be involved in your decisions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I had a question. Tom Belt from Hillview Place. I had a question earlier, but I saw that this item was on the agenda, so I didn't want to bring it up during public forum initially. But I know I speak to a lot of people in St. Helena and regarding the way that the Adams Street proposal was conducted without the public involvement that I would have liked to have seen and many of us would have liked to have seen before it went to the place where it went. One of the questions that we had, I have, is this committee, this review committee that was established by, I understand it was originally Jennifer Phillips's idea and then the interim city manager went ahead forward with it. But we hear about the costs of the general fund and we're always concerned about how much money we're spending. But in this case, how much money was spent to hire this committee? How much money out of the general fund went to pay these three people to do this recommendation that they made before the city council? I would like to have that transparency and know that information, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Suzanne Salvistrin, right next door. I'm just so happy to see this proposal on trying to get organized and seeing what we have. And I've emailed you all volunteering to be on the committee, community committee. So please don't forget to call me when you're ready because I am so ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Lou Levine. We live at 453 Fulton Lane. I spoke at the last discussion of this. In that discussion, just to reinforce some of the comments that were made, urged that there be more analysis, information, and community input related to this project. And in light of the community reaction because of the character impact that this project has, not to mention all the other impacts that it has, that it would seem that if the council were to do anything tonight, that it would reassure the committee, or the community in at least some small way, that this was going to be gone at in a logical fashion, recognizing the fact the community did have a lot to say. If you establish D as an item as part of the direction to the new city manager, if you believe in that and you want the citizens to participate in discussion, it would seem very prudent to take that step. The idea of having the information as to what the status of all the city properties are that are relevant to this conversation would also be a very prudent item to do. And it would seem, in light of some of the comments made earlier tonight, and I'm not an expert in this area, but I would suggest that somebody look at the seismic question because it's pretty obvious, if you can't do anything, why are you spending any money looking at it? And the same would be relevant, related to flood zone, if there's any applicability. Those are map issues, as I understand it, and someone should be able to ascertain 100% whether those questions are relevant or not. But it would seem that the community involvement piece, the burden is on the council to at least address the fact, there's been multiple public comments about this issue, and that you start getting a handle on what the overall picture is with all the city properties that are relevant to these types of discussions. So that's my input for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment? Then I'll close up public comment. Again, where I am is that I would like to see the city, if it can do it, at least identify folks that are able to evaluate our city properties, not just what they're worth, but their condition, how depreciated they are. And, you know, I think City Hall, the Railroad Street properties, maybe the Carnegie Building at a secondary level also, but probably much more difficult is addressing the needs of our parks. And possibly Public Works has other thoughts here, too. But in terms of city properties themselves. And, you know, I would assume that part of the long-term financial forecast and update would be going back to our roads, which was part of the last long-term financial forecast. But I think this needs to focus on these city properties. And so what I would suggest, if city staff can do it, is to reach out to the City of Napa, because I'm pretty confident they've been going through this process as they've been undertaking to evaluate building a new city hall there. And they had a good group of people that helped them. And see what it takes and what the cost is, just roughly, and come back and report to us with respect to that. And then I would simply plead with my fellow council members to, with respect to the balance here, to wait until our new city manager is on board. We'll make it an early point of discussion. But it seems just elementary city process to me that he be given an opportunity to take a look at this and give us a realistic assessment of when it can be done, what's going to be required, and so on.
Well, I think, as for item A, I think it's probably pretty easy to get a copy of the Napa document itself. And we would have a template. I think it's more a matter for our, if we're going to go this route, which I think we need to assess these facilities, for our staff to maybe spend some time putting together a list of what we have. You know, what's the address? What's the PIN number of the property? The kind of information that the consultant is going to need. And then certainly, when Mark comes at the end of the month, he's probably been through this once or twice himself. And I would hope that we could get the bones or get an RFP to the council in August. Because remember, then you've got to send the thing out and you've got to wait for the responses to come in. And it's quite a while down the road until you hire the person. And then it's another month or so until you have the results. And that's why I think that we should do as much as we can on A. I'm not suggesting we cut the manager out of the process at all. I think we would show him the rest of this list, like B and C, and ask him what he thinks and when he thinks he could work it in to the schedule. I do think we should do D. And I don't think it should be the last thing on the agenda. I think on every agenda, there should be an Adams Street update so that we have some discussion and people can ask questions. Because if you were looking at Cindy's agenda forecast, it was telling people that what was going to be on the agenda was a discussion of the next steps on Adams Street. And that was publicized three times. But when we actually got to the meeting, it wasn't what are the next steps on Adams Street? It was here is a project for you to approve. And I think that we definitely should do D. It doesn't cost us any time, doesn't cost us any money.
What would be the update? I mean, the, anything on Adams Street would be...
What's happening? What we're doing? What we're going to be bringing?
There's not going to be much of an update because at this point, we're going to be focusing on our facilities. I think that's the process, right? Focus on facilities. Adams Street is, I'm not exactly sure what on Adams Street you would want updated.
You know, it could be that there's nothing to be said at that meeting. But it could also be that once Mark is on board, he says, okay, here's what I think as far as the timeframe that we can start to do these other items. Because then we have a regular forum for people to stay tuned and not, you know, lose track of what we're doing.
I don't, I mean, I agree with that. I just want to give the new city manager an opportunity to dig into this a little bit and tell us what he thinks is reasonable.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not saying we're going to start like B and C. I'm saying, I think it's something that should be done if the consensus of the council is we should do it. We should then talk with him about it and say, what do you think? And what's your timeframe? Or how would you tweak this?
That's all. I'm open to all of that. But I want him involved in the process.
I'm not cutting him out.
Okay. Maybe, okay.
The only other thing I would add is that with the input of our finance director, I would like to have our staff focus in on our impact fees to see. I think there's actually money in there for the studies that we're looking for in the various impact fees, especially the civic impact fee. I, there's no doubt in my mind that we can use that money for the kinds of facility studies that we're about to undertake.
In the civic...
Civic, and there are other impact fees that may be appropriate, too, depending on how they relate to facilities. I know there's limitations in each one of those and how much we can spend, but certainly we need to focus in on that, where we can draw some of that money for these purposes.
Right.
Our director, April Mitz, won't be back until the 23rd or 24th, I believe, so...
Okay. All right. Have we taken this about as far as we can tonight?
Well, I don't know if we've decided anything. I mean, I'd like to move that we...
Do more direction from us?
Yeah.
Do more direction from us? I mean, I don't know if it's clear or not.
Is the direction just to do A at this point in time? I haven't really had a clear direction.
Right. It's at least to begin to take a look at A and see how we would go about it and who the consultants are that we would need to hire and what the scope of work might look like.
And what it costs for City of Napa, just, it depends on the scope of theirs, what it costs for them.
Well, it may cost very differently for us than for them.
Yeah, we're looking at more facilities.
They've got, they've got pretty large facilities that had to be evaluated, so...
I'd also like to move ahead on D. And I would like to move ahead on E. I think this is a case where we could appoint a temporary council subcommittee that could be working with the staff on these things and working with the manager. And it would, you know, keep us involved and keep things moving. That's primarily why I suggested...
And who would you propose for E? Yourself and who else?
How about Mr. Doring?
All right.
I don't know. What do you think?
How about Mr. White? Well, I would be happy to do it. But... I'm happy to do it also. I mean, I think there's not going to, I think we're going to be treading very slowly here until Mr. Presswich comes on board, but I think we can keep the ball rolling. I think it's going to heat up in like four months and then there's going to be a tremendous amount of work to be done, so...
But I do think it is good, particularly talking about D, which is the involvement of the public, so that as the wheels start spinning, that one is always engaged and never left behind.
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve with Councilmember Coburnstein to at least have some input from council members who represent citizens who can kind of add our two cents to whatever this process is. I'd be happy to do it.
So, just to jump in, I believe that Acting City Manager Smithies and myself could probably provide some information to the council that would help move this forward with regards to our existing city facilities, potentially some cost of appraisals. I'm sorry, there's one other element. Oh, by the next, by a meeting in August. So I think we could definitely provide some of that information to the council by a meeting in August, in addition to reaching out to the City of Napa and getting some ballpark ideas about what they did in their processes, maybe some names of firms, et cetera. There are forensic architects, that's what they do. That's, I think, a fairly achievable task. As, I think the mayor's trying to allude to, your staff has been, you know, we are under significant amounts of commitments currently, but at the same time, I think that's something that we could commit to doing, having that information ready that would allow the new city manager to begin to implement this list. And then potentially having a standing agenda item set by the city clerk on the agenda, which will allow this new subcommittee to report out to the public as to what the activities occurred in the last two weeks.
Okay, all of that sounds good. So I'm certainly willing to nominate Mr. Doring and Ms. Coburnstein to this subcommittee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Black?
Mayor Galbraids?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yes.
Coburnstein?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything further at this point? Then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.